Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, March 29th, 2010. It's on or about 7:00 p.m. And this evening, City Council is going to be meeting in a series of four committee meetings. We have one member that's going to be a little late, so I understand we're going to jump the first subject, if we may, Member Butler, and go straight into E.B. I know Member Vane wanted to be here for the Sandlot baseball, so we'll go slightly out of order.
There she is.
Here she is. Well, Member Butler, it's your committee, you run it.
Okay. So which one do you want to do first?
It's your committee, sir, you run it.
Okay. Out of respect for Member Vane and her long history of serving for the city, do you have a desire to speak on one or the other first? I know you mentioned you wanted to be part of the Sandlot discussion, if you're prepared for that as well.
Oh, no, I thought we were done.
Well, we'll go ahead and stick to the agenda, since we're on time here. So there's been discussion about the Sandlot League and their recent efforts to put together a grant to purchase lighting for the ball fields specifically, and there are representatives here from Sandlot, which I'm hoping to hear from, and to give them the opportunity to speak. But specifically, I think, if I'm not wrong, it's the Fenway Park, which is a seven-to-nine-year-old ball field on West State Street. So a couple of weeks ago, when we were in regular session of council, I believe Mr. Zorn was present and mentioned some questions and curiosities about where the grant stands, because he was in receipt of a document from the City Service Safety Director acknowledging that we were not prepared, that the city was not prepared to support the grant at the moment. So we encouraged Sandlot and Mr. Zorn to come back with some more information, and council is prepared to ask some questions regarding that grant and lighting and costs and whatnot. So at this moment, if there's members of Sandlot or representatives from Sandlot that would like to discuss this, we can field questions or ask questions from council members here. Does that sound appropriate, gentlemen?
That's fine.
Okay. And please identify yourself and share. Feel free to add some other background information, too, that you think will be relevant to the situation.
Okay, thank you. My name is George McCarthy, and I'm one of the board members from Athens Sandlot. I was waiting for our illustrious President Todd Zorn to step forward, but he volunteered me, so I will be speaking on behalf of the organization. As the councilman pointed out, we applied for a grant, a CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, from the county that was available last minute, and we were awarded the grant with little and short notice of preparing and submitting the grant. We were happy to get the grant. Normally, we would come to go through the City Rec Department, through Rich Campitelli, the director there, prior to initiating something like this, where we've had discussions with him over the years since 2004, 2005, about putting lights in the field. This particular grant just fell in our lap. We made application. In speaking with those folks, we were very lucky to have gotten this grant in the first place. We went to the Rec Advisory Committee a few weeks ago, explained the situation of getting that grant awarded, and they had indicated their support for the grant and thought if the monies were available, that it should be pursued. And we spoke with Service Safety Director Paula Mosley regarding that, and we're trying to get a meeting of the minds in order to come to an agreement as far as whether the city would pitch in and pick up some of the miscellaneous costs put together for getting the whole project done. The grant was a $25,000 application. We got approximately $21,000 of it. It's about a $60,000 project. The other half is sponsored through volunteers and people who are willing to donate their expertise in installing lights on this particular field, which is actually a nine-to-12-year-old field. It could be used for that group of ages, which is probably three-quarters of the kids that we service there on those fields. We started for background for folks who have not heard from us before, or if Mr. Zorn had not covered it before. The organization basically came into existence around 2002, 2003. We came into existence because there was a Little League system in place that serviced nine-to-12-year-old kids on paper, but in actuality, there was a cut system and a tryout system, so it actually only serviced primarily 11- and 12-year-olds. Teams are competitive at the Little League system. Typically, there's pitching, it's kid pitch, so kids are competitive, and you naturally want older kids. Older kids have better skills than younger kids. And what we found is our group of five fathers who got together, who started Sandlot, was that there was a gap between servicing those kids, seven to 10, weren't getting any playing. They were actually left, they were left aside while primarily the 11- and 12s were getting playing time. So we stepped up and we formed an organization back in 2002 unofficially, and started playing with certain age groups, seven-and-eights. We've progressed the next year to nine-and-ten's. When we started off, we had four teams, about four teams of nine kids, not even 40 kids. The next year, we doubled it to 80 kids, and presently, we're looking at about 400 or 500 kids. When we started, we had a seven-and-eight group, or a nine-and-ten group, then we picked up seven-and-eight. In the course of this, and working with the city, we've picked up girls softball, and we've also expanded to junior high to include seventh graders and eighth graders. And we've seen a tremendous influx of kids through the program. We've gotten great support. We cannot do this without the support of the community, because it's not only the five fathers who started off the group, but it's because of the City of Athens support that we got through citizens here, and also throughout the county, who actually pitched in a lot of labor, time, and effort into getting where we are today, so we always want to thank them. When it came up to this project, we were looking to light a field to address some of the concerns that the city had, including use of the fields. It's becoming so popular that even when soccer was down there, and soccer and baseball were down there, parking is at a premium, like every place else in the City of Athens. And we were hoping that with the lights, we could extend our practice times and playing times, create a little bit of a buffer between games in order to alleviate some of the congestion down there, as it does get quite hectic with the popularity that the program has brought forward. In looking at the grant, the cost that Sandlot was covering was everything except connecting from the power source to the lights, period. That was the only thing that was missing from the component, from all the monies that were being put in. In other words, the purchasing of the lights, the installation of the lights, the trenching for the lights, was all going to be taken care of with the grant, or through other aspects of what the grant addressed. The only thing we were looking for, the city cooperation, was extending from a power source, which is readily available there at the fields, because we have softball fields lit down there, across the roadway over to the Fenway Park. There was a quote that I believe the Rec Department got from an electrical contractor. The notes on it is $8,000 for trenching and setting the poles, and $8,000 for electrical wiring and pipe. The $8,000 for trenching and setting the poles actually should not be included in the estimate, because that's addressed by our grant figures, and that's taken care of from the Sandlot side.
We have a three-minute minimum that you've gone past, but we'd like to be flexible with that, if you could.
Okay. Well, I guess what it comes down to is that, first of all, the estimate is erroneous. It doesn't address what needs to be done. It's not itemized. I think the figure is $8,000 for electrical wiring and pipe. We have electrical people that we rely upon. We thought this would be done in-house by the city to absorb the cost and wouldn't be any expense to them. We understand there might be some actual capital improvement costs for the actual physical line, but thought that the city could do the wiring part like they do for most jobs. Point being is that, first of all, an itemized list would be helpful to see what exactly the cost would be. We have plenty of people who are electricians, who are certified, qualified electricians, who could do this if it's going to be bid out, or somehow given to the public in large to bid on it. But we'd like the opportunity to at least to have council address that cost and tell us if we need to meet that cost, or if it's something that we need to look at absorbing as a cost before it's just denied and taken off the agenda as far as being wiped off the plate and told that it's not a possibility. The only thing I want to point out is that the grant we got was very, very fortunate that we got this grant, because the CDBG grants typically do not come to Athens, because Athens is one of the more wealthier communities in our county. So, yep, we're one of the wealthier ones. So we're not the priority list of receiving grants like this. So we were fortunate enough to be awarded this grant, and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. My understanding, too, in doing a little bit of research on the grant, is that it is flexible in nature. From what I understand, it doesn't necessarily have to be used for lights, it could be used for other purposes as well. Is that correct, in your understanding as well?
In talking with the CDBG folks, yes, that is correct. They are somewhat flexible in its use. However, you need to understand that the support we have and the backing we have from the people who'll be involved with the lighting project are specifically involved with the lighting project.
Okay.
Because that's about $25,000 of the cost, is in labor.
So your quest, your curiosity here, would be to see an itemized list regarding how much the estimate was?
Correct.
So, because you're suggesting, then, that Sandlot would be willing to possibly absorb some more of that cost?
Yeah, we think the estimate is off and might entail some things that are covered by the grant, or otherwise can be covered. We think it's, from the people we've spoken with, we think it's a little high, and could be done more affordably. And then we would like an opportunity to see if the city's willing to accept ourselves.
Before I open up to other council members, too, I think some concerns that have been expressed to me in the past about Sandlot, too, is the need to cooperate and be more involved and engaged with the city, and this is something I think that I've communicated to some of the guys and yourself. And I would encourage that to continue, because Sandlot's here, it's a part of our community, which I applaud. There's a lot of busy work that's been done, but it's something I think in the future, if we're working on grants, or working on proposals or ideas, the more involved and engaged in the dialogue that exists and continues to flourish, then we won't be stuck in a position or situation like this, where we're not quite sure exactly which direction to go or how to handle it. Because I do know there's been some concerns from, that were communicated to me from the Rec Department as well, in this project. So I know the Rec Advisory Board had offered some support, but there are concerns about families and community and the kids being down there late at night. But that would be up to the parents as well, too, if the lights were to go forward.
Right, and, you know, we'd like to respond to concerns like that, but they're not brought forward to us in a timely manner where we can discuss them in an open debate.
Sure.
And that is, like, as we've indicated at the Rec Advisory Meeting, we're sensitive to that. But obviously, the parents who are involved in the League itself are open to the idea and support the idea. And if the council or anybody we need to speak with, then we can certainly bring them by and let you know, you know, and what they support. But we've spoken to the Rec Director about that as well, as well as other concerns, and we have had open dialogue since we've started in 2003. So we like to maintain that. This was an apparition, because literally, somebody came to us from outside and said, "Hey, there's a grant available, the window's closing, if you want this, you need to get it done, X, Y, Z." And that's what we did. Otherwise, it would have been done more appropriately, and we apologize to the Service Safety Director for the route to take, but here it is. We're hoping that the City Council takes advantage of it. Can't force you to, but hopefully they do, because it's an opportunity that rarely comes by.
And if I can clarify here real quick, too, for the record and for other members of council in the community, my understanding is that the lighting system, if it were installed, if the city decided to move forward, it is such that it uses less electricity, where there are the more-
Energy efficient.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, better than the old-school softball field lights, which I think were put up in the '70s. Our understanding in talking with the lighting providers, vendors that we've spoken with, Musco in particular, they indicate there's less wattage involved, or it's more efficiently used. I know cost has been a concern by the city, because I look at the skate park, which is lit a lot of the time, and from, speaking with the Musco people, they indicate that it would be about $2.50 an hour to run the lights, and we're looking at maybe running them maximum four hours a night, you know, four days a week.
And that is a legitimate concern regarding cost of the use of electricity?
And I think it's important to recognize that our season only lasts about 60 days. So, I mean, for the cost of lights, if that figure is actually accurate, that only comes out to about $350 for, you know, those 60 days for using them four days a week, because obviously, we plan the weekends, we play during daylight. So, and we think that's a valid concern, that has to be looked at, but from the people that we've spoken with, they're that highly efficient.
Likewise, the grant you acknowledged from the CDBG is such that, my understanding is that it has to be a grant, or it's written in such a way that has to support the endeavors of this county, correct?
Correct.
And your thoughts are that the lighting is going to allow X number of kids access to this?
Yeah, we're a county-wide system. We encourage kids from all around the county to play, and they get involved from all areas. And currently, our age group that we service is from seven to 14. And primarily, the kids we're talking about using those fields, again, that particular field is nine-to-12. But that's one of the reasons that it was kind of an opportunity for CDBG to give us, to award us the grant, was because they recognized that Sandlot is actually not only city-involved, but county-involved, and they thought it was an appropriate use of those funds.
I'm sure that there's questions from council and from the City Service Safety Director comments as well, probably. So if you're able to field some questions.
Sure.
I have a question. It's my understanding that the former administration supported this project?
Yes, ma'am.
Did anybody have communication with the current administration before the grant was applied for?
Yes, ma'am. We've been in contact with Rich Campitelli directly about lighting the fields at different various times, since he was the underling to Kevin Schwartzoff in 2003, when we got started. He was our primary contact with the city. So he's been aware throughout the years, well, let me put it this way, he's been aware throughout the years of our seeking lights and the project for that particular field. As far as being involved in this particular grant, I'd have to rely on some of the other members of the board about where he was as far as the loop, because I don't know whether he was necessarily knew about this specific grant being sought, because it was done in such a short timeframe. It was literally done in about three days.
What about the Service Safety Director and the mayor? Were they, did someone talk with them?
No, I don't believe they did.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
As part of the grant process, was there a public hearing involved or required?
I don't believe there was, according to the grant application.
Okay. I think that there's a lot of problems. I support the administration's concern about this grant. A grant was written by, you know, an entity that's not under city jurisdiction about city land, and there's a lot of issues that have to do with use of city land, different, other, you know, there's floodplain issues. We have a new floodplain ordinance, which I am not sure that this is even in accordance with, because you're putting in infrastructure into areas that are in the floodplain, if not the floodway. And I think that there's a problem there concerning that. I think that there's also a continuing concern of the assumption by individuals, or groups, or businesses, that the city can just take on certain types of costs, you know, the lights. Well, it's only $250 a year, or it's only $300 a year, but if 15 or 20 groups are assuming that, that adds up for the city. So I'm very concerned about this process. I know I have had many, many, many people approach me about this concern, because it doesn't seem to be in the public. It doesn't seem to have public scrutiny or sunshine, and that development is going on down there that's not necessarily in the public realm, no public hearings and such. And I've had a lot of complaints about this.
Well, ma'am, that's why we're here today, to address those concerns.
But the thing is, is the grant was already written, and it's kind of after the fact, and it's a hurry, hurry, we need to do this process-
I understand, sure.
-which is a concern for us, because you're assuming a lot of support that we haven't seen, you know, people writing to us about it. You haven't given us any sort of, you're saying that you have support, but we haven't seen it?
Ma'am, if you need support, and you would like people to come down here, we can certainly bring those people here for that. I understand what you're saying.
But I think that, long-term, I mean, I just think that there's a lot of concern, and I have some concern about the floodplain regulations, and whether that even, whether, you know, whether permits have to go through, you know, with the floodplain.
I can tell you, ma'am, from being with the Law Director's office for 10 years, I know Mr. Lang would be happy to address that if he needs to.
Other comments or questions?
Kevin Schwartzel, Athens Sandlot Baseball. This is a $61,000 project. It's going to cost the City of Athens less than a couple thousand dollars at most. We're going to go out and get loans ourselves, the grant, and we've got volunteers that are going to set the poles, run the wire, electrician, everything else. If we would have read the grant and looked at it, we wouldn't have got this $16,000 bid that we got. It's all in the grant, saying that we're going to set the poles, individuals are going to set the poles and everything else. It's going to cost us a couple thousand dollars. The floodplain thing, presently, the soccer group, who is right in the floodplain, they are trying to get lights for the soccer fields. They're trying to get a little building down there for locker rooms and things. So I'm sure if they can put them up down there, we can put them up down here, okay?
The issue is going through the correct permitting process.
Okay.
And I also would ask the Law Director to look at the fact of having volunteer groups set such things as lighting and such. I mean, that sounds like it could be potential. I mean, we have certain regulations, we have certain requirements for public infrastructure. And, you know, if we could do everything by volunteers, I'm sure that we would be happy to do things by volunteers. But there's certain processes and certain permits. The soccer people have put forward, if they put a building down there, I've seen the plans for them, it's, it has floodproofing in it, and it's raised according to the requirements. You know, I think that there is certain processes we need to go through, and certain sunshine things that we need to address in order to do infrastructure development.
As far as our volunteers, they're all licensed electricians. Mr. Brent Hayes, who would set the poles if somebody was called to do a bid, probably Mr. Hayes would get the bid, he's going to volunteer his equipment, his time to do it for us. Trout Electric has volunteered to do that kind of work for us, so we're not just getting me and George, who are people who don't know anything about electrical work or anything else. We have certified people who are going to do the work, who have volunteered thousands of dollars to do this for us. And if we can't take a $61,000 grant, go through everything we need to, we're going to let that go away. I think that's a shame when there's towns the size of Gloucester, Palmeroy, Middleport, that have lights for later baseball fields.
Thank you.
I'm guessing I'm over three minutes, by the way.
That's for your opening comments.
Other comments or questions from other council members? Member Gassman?
My question is, in terms of the long-term upkeep and maintenance of the lights and the poles and the electrical work, would that become city property after the grant, or after installation?
Yeah, I think it would be, much like the solar project down where they're covering those, ostensibly those costs with that, it would become, say, city responsibility. Same thing is with the softball lights, you know, after they were installed, they're obviously the softball, whatever, if a light goes out, I think the-
So it would become the Recreation Department's property, basically?
Yes, sir.
Member Sands?
I had a comment. I think it was made clear to us at the last committee meeting where this was talked about, it was made clear to the council members that this was an administrative decision, and the gentleman who came to talk to us then, we suggested that we would listen, and if we wanted to recommend something different to the Service Safety Director, then that's all we can do. We're not going to vote on this. And at the moment, I'm backing the decision of the administration. I think there are enough questions that it's not something that I would want to recommend as a council member at this point.
Thank you, Member Sands. Were there, Paula, comments from the City Service Safety Director?
Well, let me start out by saying what Sarah didn't print, and that is that I love baseball. I acknowledge all the work and effort that the Sandlot Group has put into the West State Street ball fields.
Paula?
I, what?
There are people that are signaling they cannot hear you.
I can speak, Paula. I was acknowledging all the work that the Sandlot Group had put into the West State Street Park. I do, of course, want to note, it is indeed the West State Street Park. It is not Sandlot's Park, even though my son's little schedule that I printed out says, "All played at Sandlot Field." I know what that means, but I understand that. To clarify on the electrical issue, what I've been told, what I've been informed, is that it requires a transformer, which is where the high cost comes in. So it's not just a setting of a pole, or whatever, we need a transformer down there. As far as the note that there is lighting existing, that is for our adult softball league, it is not for a youth league. George, I just wanted you to make sure that I understood. When we met in January, you indicated that this was the beginning. The idea was to light Fenway Park with a potential for expansion of future lighting, and I just wanted to state still the goal. So it's, the idea is then to light all the fields down there, the youth fields, as it were?
We, you know, our goal is to light at least one field.
And make display on a second field, according to this.
Correct, because some of the poles might be able to be used to be shared for behind field, right behind it.
We have, and I think Chris kind of identified that, I do hear a lot about maximum use already of the West State Street fields. We've got, you know, the baseball activities, we have the adult softball activities, we've got, of course, the bike path, we've got our shelter house, and we're having a canoe-access ramp. So it's time to maybe stand back and look at this as a whole and see, you know, how much more can it take on, how much more do we want to put in place there? So, that was, you know, and I love baseball.
Chris, you have to come up to him. I just wondered when it lost the J.C.'s field. As a child, it was the J.C.'s field, land named by the J.C.
Chris, there's a lot more people out in TV land that would love to hear you, and if you don't stand up here, they're not going to get to.
That's all right. I'll repeat it for him. He asked, as far as he knew growing up and going way back, that it was known as the J.C.'s fields, and he wanted to know where it lost its status as a J.C. field.
Okay.
I don't know.
It's all signed.
And I don't have the answer to that either.
Correct, they're the ones who actually got the softball fields installed there.
They aren't in existence anymore.
Correct, they folded some time ago, in the '70s, '79 or so, but they were responsible for implementing softball fields, much like that was our, that was our goal, to extend what they had done back in that day.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
And I had, I'm sorry, one more item to note, which was, I did talk with our police chief, who happens to be in the audience tonight for some other issue, and his only concern, which is a concern any time we review development, is then he would want increased lighting in the parking area. We don't want to set up a situation where then you have, the field is lit, and you have shadows in a parking area where vehicles are moving, and what happened. So it kind of starts with-
What's different between that softball?
My adult softball league.
My adult softball?
I meant, the city's-
Gentlemen, gentlemen-
Come on, you want to take charge, or you want me to?
Thank you.
We need to have everybody's comment, one at a time up here. George will say it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who next?
Are there other comments from Sandlot? Well, at this moment, I would encourage Sandlot to continue to work with the city administration to work out the bugs, if they exist, to continue to dialogue. Obviously, I get it, that you guys are trying to improve the community, and that you're bringing in tax dollars through people visiting our community, playing ball, I understand that, tourism, I get that. Just please- Just please continue to work with the city in this dialogue and future grants and future endeavors and keep us involved in the process. Any other comments or questions on this issue? Thanks, Joanie.
Joan Kornansky, and I really just have one comment. You know, the service safety director mentioned about the possibility of overcrowding or maxing out the space of the Athens West State Street Park, and she mentioned the activities down there, which includes also the gardens. And I would like to mention, the wellheads are also located in that park. And I think a primary concern to every citizen in the city of Athens should be our drinking water. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanie.
My name is Juan Cueto, and I'm, I just moved here about three years ago, a new resident to Athens. And I think that, you know, coming in from out of town, coming from a large city, my child was always playing in baseball, I played softball. One of my concerns as well, as somebody brought up, the lighting in the parking lot for adults, and somebody said that only adults are there, but I bring my kids to watch me play softball, so they can see all the fundamentals. I would like to see, you know, some of these children, including my kids, I have three, enjoy their childhood and grow up playing the American baseball that we play here, right? And enjoy the good old times. Because I remember growing up, playing baseball and swinging the bat, you know, and enjoying life as it is as a kid. I mean, everybody enjoys that, right? Eating popcorn, you know, watching mom and dad on the crowd and rooting you on and stuff like that. And at nighttime, it's a whole different feeling. When the lights are on, you feel like you're in a superstar. And the lights are shining on you, your helmet's shining, you know, and the kids feel different. We went to chill a coffee not long ago for a tournament, they had lights, it was phenomenal. I mean, these kids were like, wow, we're playing in the lights, we're playing in nighttime. And it was an experience that my son still talks about today, and this was a year ago, and we still talk about it. We just came back this week from another tournament, they had lights. Only here in Athens, and everybody always talks about Athens being such a great city to live in, and yet we don't have these, you know, things for kids to enjoy. So soccer feels the same thing. I think, you know, soccer is important as well, and I, you know, and if the soccer fields want lights, I'll be up here saying, let's go for it as well, because kids are important. And those are the people who are going to give back to Athens in the future. So if they treat them bad now, when they grow older, they're not going to give back to their community, they're going to get out of here. They will, and they'll raise their children somewhere else. A lot of these people left this community and came back to raise their children here because they had a good experience. So let's give our children that we have now experiences that they'll remember forever and raise their children here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Bill Fornier. First of all, I want to make sure that everybody realizes and understands that we are in no way trying to circumvent any regulations or any process or anything like that. This just happened to be a bit of an anomaly that kind of fell into our lap. Secondly, I was one of the founding members of Sanlot, and I know what it was like to go down to those fields before there was any activity at all or very little. And I know what it's like to have kids get cut and not get a phone call because they didn't get to play. And that was the foundation for Sanlot. Now, when we began, we had no idea that it would grow to 500 kids. But we're lucky and we're fortunate that it has, because now we have 500 groups of families that have someplace to go, where they can partake in something and enjoy that park. And it's really developed and it's really blossomed, and I'm sure you all realize that. So it was an opportunity for these people to just get together. Just a quick little story, the poster child for Sanlot Baseball wanted to play, and he really wasn't very good, wasn't very athletic, but he loves the game of baseball. And he was able then to encourage his dad to go out and start to play catch. And that really built the relationship and really strengthened the relationship between the father and his son. And that's really part of what Sanlot does. And by giving us an opportunity to play under the lights, as he just said, for kids, it's amazing how they get an opportunity to go under the lights, it's like a whole new world. And it gives them one more way to bond and one more way to build that relationship. And that's really what we're trying to do, because really, we're not, we're focusing on the kids and what is best for the kids, and what do the kids want, and what are they going to enjoy? And then we work around and do the best we can within the regulations and the guidelines to make it happen for them. So we would just ask that, we all have the same focus, and that's really based on the kids.
Sure, thank you. And no one is proposing that that's not happening or that doesn't exist. Just encourage you to continue to work with the city government.
Right, and I apologize, I don't mean to suggest that anybody is saying-
Sure.
...anything to the contrary, it's just, I want you to know that's where our focus is and that's where it's always been. So thank you.
Yeah.
Again, my name's Todd Zorn, I brought this to council last, well, two weeks ago, before spring break. I was approached by a conversation by Paula Mosley about bringing this to council to get it out of her hands, that maybe council could do something so she didn't have to make that decision. And so that's why I was here, and that's why I'm bringing it here. We went through an advisory board. I don't, actually, I don't know what the parks advisory board does, if, you know, if it's getting overturned other places. So I'm not sure of the proper steps we need to take to get grants like this done. I mean, do we go through council, do we go through safety service, do we go to the Parks and Recreation Department, which I thought we did and got their approval? I'm a little concerned about the processes we need to go through. It's a little over maybe my head, our legal counsel might know a little more about it, but I'm confused. I mean, when this grant was written, I wasn't even aware at the time of the grant, because that's how the short time notice we got. One of the commissioners, I think, approached us and gave us that information. We went, we proceeded with it, we got the grant, we're awarded. We were told we need to go through the advisory board, we went through the advisory board, got the okay, and now we're here in a situation where council can't do anything, and they're going on, I mean, we're based on what the city service director's going to say. And I don't know if we can do anything about it. I mean, I wish we could, I hate to lose this grant. I mean, these kids, my son in particular, you know, when I come home and tell him, no, we're not going to have lights, he's going to be very disappointed. And there's going to be five to 600 kids that are going to be very disappointed. I mean, this is a project that we've always been working towards since this is a foundation, since we built this program. We want to, you know, keep building this program. If we're going to get delayed here, you know, what's next? You know, I mean, I don't, I don't see an end to it, I don't see an end to it. Somewhere, we're going to have to cooperate, and it's not happening.
If I may, I'd like to clarify, when I spoke with Mr. Zorn, he asked if there was any other recourse. I said you can speak with council, that would be the only other recourse that he had asked for. And, let's go.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Fairly contentious issue. Thank you.
Chris Coswell, again, I'm part of the Sanlot organization. So what is our next recourse? And does it stop here, or do we have other options?
No, I would encourage-
I'm not willing to quit fighting for kids.
Sure.
You know, I teach school, I've taught school for 18 years, I'm about fighting for kids. What do we need to do to keep fighting for kids? I see a city that offers very little to the kids. They have a wonderful rec facility, what else do you do for kids? We've got a skate park, what else? You know, softball, softball, from what I saw as a kid, the softball that's offered down there is minimal. You know, so in terms of the light usage, it's decreased down there, so certainly we can offset the light usage for softball and shift it towards kids. But what's our recourse? Where do we go next?
Well, I welcome the opportunity to meet, as chairman of the Arts Parks Recreation Committee, I definitely will set up time to meet. We can meet with the city service safety director, we can meet with Rich Campitelli, right, the Arts Parks Recreation-
I'm not willing to let it die.
No, I understand.
I mean, if somebody would knock on my door and say, Chris, hey, we're going to give you $61,000 of capital improvement for your house, and it's going to cost you a couple thousand bucks, I'd be a fool to walk away. And, you know, I mean, certainly you guys might feel, hopefully you'd feel the same way if they threw that offer on the board, too. And that's what you guys are being offered, and you're scoffing at it.
Okay. Could I start?
Sure.
The way I understand, what I would think your next step would be, would be to find a sponsor, if it is the fact that the administration is saying no, is that where we are?
I have issued that letter. I actually take offense at the fact that the claims of the city that-
That's other cities, friends of mine, what those kids have available to them.
You're asking, what is your next step?
Yeah.
Assuming that the administration is saying no to this, I would think, and I'll ask the law director to correct me if I'm wrong, is you need a sponsor and a second, and then you can force a vote.
Okay, by a sponsor, you're talking about one of you guys?
One of the members of council.
I'm taking a step beyond that, I'm not just waiting on this, because Chris is a former coach of mine. But I think we need to, one thing that hasn't been made clear here, especially for maybe people watching at home, people that haven't been following this debate, is what exactly is being asked? What was the request that was made to the administration? Because I think there is some potential question here as to whether we're dealing with, I mean, there may be some aspects of this which would have a legislative nature about them, such as if money is being spent, you know, something like that, but to the extent that this is an administrative question, then council, you know, may or may not have authority to act on certain parts of this. So I guess just to kind of clarify this for everybody, I would ask, what was the specific request made to the city administration and where did it go from there? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot there, but I'm just trying to clarify this for everyone watching.
In the way I, and I have not been a part of all the debate here, but it sounds to me like an ordinance accepting the grant and providing a, whatever the matching funds would need to be, would be what would come before council, if it is in the peruse of council.
I don't think we're asking for matching funds, we're asking for a drop in the bucket.
I realize that.
Now, Ms. Nizey, are you on the rec advisory panel?
Well, I was present at the meeting.
For the unanimous vote to approve the recommendation?
I was present at the meeting, I did not vote on that as a voting member of the advisory committee I attend, as a committee, the council member who is a member of that committee.
Do you remember it being a unanimous vote?
I remember it being a vote. I remember the questions being asked, though, is that the grant had already been approved, and Rich Campitelli may have been aware of it, and during the previous administration, that conversations had occurred. I think the difficulty that some of us have with it is the process that was followed. It's a grant that's already been approved-
Yeah.
-and now after the fact, asking, you know, for the city to perform certain duties and, and they ask it of the administration, and it is an administrative, you know, I think much of the thinking here is, is that it is an administrative matter to work out, rather than something coming through council.
Yeah, and we know, you know, based on the situation, we know that we must, you know, with the bottom line is, we've got this pool of money available for us. And, you know, we don't want to give up the fight to put this money to use for the kids, you know, that's the bottom line.
Just a second. I just wanted to make one thing clear, because I think that's a good point that the law director brought up, is why we're here. Reason I'm here is because I'm, my understanding when the president was here last time, that there was a question about what actually needed to be done in order to secure this grant, what was going to be the city's obligation. Ms. Mosley issued a letter basically saying that the costs are going to be $8,000 or $16,000 in order to get this light strong from the power source to the lighting poles for the project. The city's not prepared to absorb that cost, and therefore, we are not supportive of the grant. So my point here today is to indicate to council that if money is the issue, we can go back and address that on the Sanlot side. If money's the issue for the administration or for council, then Sanlot can go and raise those resources if necessary, if the cost of the lights for the year is the problem. Sanlot can address that, we would like the opportunity to do that, just not to deny it. I understand that there are issues and they're all valid points. And when I addressed, we had a meeting with Ms. Mosley earlier this year in January, talking about all this. And again, I said, we apologized for it, because that was not the proper way to do it. So that's what I thought we were doing here today, and I wanted to just make it clear that we don't want to put it on you and cover the money, but if you say that the project's okay, or if we can come up with that money that caused to complete the power source to that point, just let us know. We're willing to look at that, see if we can take care of that side. That's all I want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you. So at this moment, I am guessing it is still an executive branch decision, it's still in the hands of the executive branch, would be the mayor's office and city service safety director, unless we move or offer a different direction. Mayor, do you have any comments on this?
It's still in our hands, and still no, I think.
Mr. Zorn?
One more comment, maybe a question for the mayor, or somebody can address this. Is it not true that we give $10,000 to, towards the community garden?
We give $10,000 to community food initiatives, $5,000, that is residential compost, and $5,000 is for the community garden.
Okay.
It's a reduction from last year, which was 15.
And that same amount is probably less than what we're asking to fund, the city to fund for these lights. I just, I mean, if you can give $10,000 to a community garden that's on this same property, and the lighting for the youth that serves 500, I mean, I'm sure, sure that garden doesn't serve 500 people. It's a small section.
We have to work hard to keep that garden that size. Actually, there's been contention of whether they're getting too close to baseball fields. So it's a question of baseball fields of food, I guess, isn't it?
I don't, Mr. Mayor, I don't think anybody's been hit by a ball yet, just, um-
Okay, that's good to hear.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Zorn.
I'm just, I'm just trying to see where matching funds, you know, $10,000 into the community garden, could put $10,000 into helping lay wall fields that serve the same amount.
And I don't, and I don't think the issue-
I think basically what we're at, I mean, to get back to where it was earlier, to answer the question, I mean, it seems so, this is just based on what I'm understanding from the debate here, that what's being asked would be a ordinance from council, authorizing the service safety director to enter into a contract or to an agreement of some sort. I've not seen this draft contract or agreement, but that, my discussions with Bill here, has been the best that I've been able to ascertain.
As with any other grant that we apply, we receive authorization.
Council always authorize.
The first I heard was a November 13, 2009, letter from Hawking Athens Perry Community Action, saying, "Dear Paula, as you know, blah, blah, blah," and it says, "A project is listed, provide lighting to two youth, two youth baseball fields to allow baseball and softball games to be played at night." And they asked me as a floodplain administrator, so.
Well, and everybody that has come up has said that the process wasn't followed, but you know, for a lot of the stimulus money, we short-circuited a lot of our own processes, you know. I think what it needs to come down to personally from the presider of this is to see, is there a sponsor and a second that will carry the ordinance through and vote on it? I think that people deserve a vote.
I think we deserve to vote earlier, myself, but that's just my, for our, the opinion.
Well, I agree.
But let me just say that I think that what we need to know is not that there's a promise that maybe it'll only cost 2,000, maybe it'll be 10,000, but we need to have a meeting of the minds exactly what it is that we are committing to. And that is not clear to me. I think it's not clear to the rest of us either. Are we going to have a transformer, as the service safety director said, or are we not? Let's just get sharpened up. I mean, I don't like the emotionalism that's been going on, I'd like to have some just hard, fast facts about what it's going to cost us.
Thanks, Mayor.
And if you can get that to us, then, I'm not guaranteeing I will support it, but let's just, we have other things we have to do tonight, and we're sort of round and round and round, and nobody's really saying anything about what needs to happen. And maybe we can't afford to do it this year. Possible, maybe not probable, maybe you guys have to find the money somewhere else. But, you know, right now, we don't know, and we say, the service safety director, who we know a lot better than the rest of you, has said she needs a transformer. So let's find out what needs to happen and get off, get off this emotional jay.
If we, if we fund the project, we have permission to do it, if we fund with the difference between the grant and what it costs, if we run the electric and everything, we go out and raise money- if we run the electric and everything, we go out and raise money, can we have permission to do it? If it doesn't cost the city a penny?
There is no guarantee, I don't think. I mean, how can we guarantee this without the, I mean, you have to tell us what it is. We have to have standards, come on. I mean, let's find out what has to happen before we go on any further with this flailing around, okay?
And I think, and I think you're right. And I think that was the purpose of the estimate. That's what it was supposed to address. And the estimate that came back didn't address that.
But you didn't even address the transformer, George, so what about that? Now I'm getting emotional. Let's, you know, I'd like to-- No, it's not okay. I mean, I don't want to be called anti-kid.
This is part of the open process, and this is good. It's all good. I understand. From talking with the people from, who actually do the vendors for the lighting, who do this for a living, they tell us that transformer's not needed. So we're having second and third electrical people. I understand, but she's getting her information from the one person they asked for. They gave you a $16,000 estimate that we believe should have been more, like $2,000 to $4,000 tops. So we're going to go and get, talk to electrical contractors as well and say, what's exactly the meaning of that? And we think that's appropriate, because I think you need to know the cause when we did this project was to dig a trench from the existing power source to pole number one. And I think that should be a fixed cause, and you wouldn't think that that would be too hard to estimate. The estimate that the service safety director includes a bunch of stuff, that shouldn't be included. Not that she got it or anything, but just the one that she's got on her hands.
What is the timeframe on losing the money?
About 30 days. In fact, it might be shorter than that because they've been stringing this out, waiting to see if this was going to come to fruition, whether the city was going to get on board or not. Because they honestly have people behind us that want the money. And should be entitled to it if we can't get our ducks in a row, even at this late date, due to our roundabout way of knowing about this.
Thank you, George.
I have it on the notes you have. It's April 2010 to August 2011, from when we met with Sandor.
Yeah, but they need to--
Right, lock it in tight.
And let go of mine.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of you for maintaining your call and coming to us tonight. The way I would see, this is a committee that has discussed it. I think some conversations can go on, and if there can be a sponsor of an ordinance, as the law director would describe as needed, and a second, we'll see what can happen. But not tonight. This is a committee meeting night. This is not a regular session of council, okay?
One of the very last words the service safety director said was that the half cabinet asked her to sign off as floodplain administrator. And the floodplain is an issue here. And so as part of this, facts we need to know, what is, what's the, what's the effect of this in the floodway? What's the effect of the floodway going to have on, on that particular thing?
I would say it's a high probability of what we call a no impact.
A no impact, okay.
We're not talking, some of the dugouts on the highway.
Okay. We're not going, we're here. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Next question.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the Hebe sculpture.
Do you want to give people a chance to move around? Move around.
Anyone that doesn't want to stay and listen to Hebe, if you would like to--
We've heard it many times. So why don't you, if you were going to sponsor us, why don't you look for sponsors? Because then you'll be sure it's going to go somewhere else. Otherwise, what would happen? I don't think you'd want them. Oh, five, no. You probably need five sponsors. We don't need it to be. We dis-taste the lights. Tourism money counts. I want to know who's using it.
Thank you, Mr. Winters, your patience here.
We ready to go?
Yes, I believe we're still live here. So let me offer a brief, brief background here and data before I introduce Mr. Winters, who is present from the Athens Municipal Arts Commission here. Sometime back, there was questions and concerns about the Hebe sculpture, which currently resides in the city water building. There had been interest in the community in which council was addressed at the potentiality of moving the sculpture. So that was then presented to council and to look at this issue and discuss it. Council then sent it to the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, which is a volunteer group formed by the previous mayor and council to offer any guidance related to art-related issues within the city. The Athens Municipal Arts Commission then asked me to chair a subcommittee, which Mr. Winters will describe as well here, too. And we then proceeded with a report and looking into this issue at great length about Hebe and whether or not she should remain at the water building or whether she should be moved. So Mr. Winters is present this evening as the--
I'm going to introduce myself.
Okay, wonderful.
And I'm going to do some of the reading because the AMAC has been very careful in wording the recommendations that I'm going to read to you. This is a recommendation, not a, let's all sit down and discuss, okay? First of all, my name is Bob Winters. I've been a part of the Athens community since 1962, when I joined the faculty of the Ohio University School of Theater and College of Fine Arts. My primary assignment has been in theater. I've worked a lot in community theater. I've also worked with the School of Music and extensively with the School of Film. I'm currently a retired professor emeritus in the School of Theater. My residence is on the Athens city limits in what I lovingly call Greater Metropolitan South King of Bill. Got to have something. I'm with you tonight as the vice chair of the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. We just call it AMAC. In response to requests from council and from the city administration that we research and consider the matter of the placement of the statue of Hebe. While making these considerations, we received extensive input from citizens in the community, from a variety, with a variety of different suggestions. In keeping with our normal procedures, we appointed a small ad hoc committee to do the required research, consider the many suggestions, and make recommendations to AMAC to provide informed background for AMAC's recommendation to council. As part of their considerations, this ad hoc committee felt the need to bring in a recognized professional expert in such pieces of art as Hebe. And this expert was from the Casting Arts and Technology Foundry of Cincinnati, Ohio, one of the major people that do this kind of work. And we have, and I have a major portion of the report here that you can look at or whatever. Kent has copies of it. We can get to that and answer questions. I've been asked by the members of AMAC to call your attention to the careful, detailed, and sensitive consideration provided by the ad hoc committee, led with the skill and great care by Kent Butler, who is the council representative to AMAC. Members of AMAC have thoroughly considered to discuss all of the recommendations. And with your patience, I will read to you the recommendations to council and city administration. After finishing the reading, I will try to answer any questions that you might have. I have copies of the recommendations for council and for city personnel. They're going to be distributed afterwards, if you so choose. The preamble. This is all one page, so it's not going to go on and on and on and on. Due to its historical and cultural significance, it is the Athens Municipal Arts Commission's opinion that Hebe could be one of the most valuable and significant pieces of art owned by the city of Athens. Therefore, Athens, therefore, AMAC makes the following recommendations. Recommendation number one. The statue of Hebe, goddess of youth, should remain as it is, where it is. This recommendation supports the conclusions of the expert report provided by the Klein Foundry in Cincinnati and the careful and detailed considerations of the ad hoc committee formed to study the issue. Determining factors include the likely damage and possible loss of the statue in an attempt to move it due to the material, which is zinc, not bronze. Many people thought it was a bronze statue. It is not. It's a zinc statue. Due to the material zinc that it is made of. Two, there are experts' recommendations that the zinc, zinc makes it inadvisable to expose the statue to any outside weather elements. Three, the potential weakness of the many repairs completed over the years. Four, the manner in which it is affixed to the pedestal, holding it. Five, concerns about vandalism and security. Six, the costs projected in order to move it, let alone repair it, if possible, and let alone remounting it somewhere else. That's our first recommendation. Our second recommendation. In the view of the city, in our view, the city of Athens has responsibility for maintaining Hebe as a city-owned work of art. At the current site, the statue may only require sealing coats of paint periodically, assuming the same level of care and responsibility provided over the last years by the water personnel. It is AMAC's view that the statue must be maintained at the highest possible level in order that the condition of Hebe does not deteriorate. Three, in lieu of moving Hebe downtown, there be designed and installed a series of panels, possibly including a life-size photo of Hebe, presentations in the news articles, and various other historical information regarding the statue's origins, its dedication, its purpose, its history, as well as recognizing the contributions of the city workers who saved her from the trash heap, repaired her, and installed her where she currently stands. This installation should be made in the rotunda of the Athens County Courthouse or in the public area in City Hall. It is further recommended that this installation be dedicated to the youth of Athens and that the memory, and the memory of Athens youths who have made their sacrifices in service to their country. It could be linked with the quote, "Forever young," unquote, plaque acknowledging the loss and fall in Athens County, young men and women who served in the Vietnam conflict. It is also recommended that funds for this project be obtained from grants and/or private sources. The design and installation of these panels should be coordinated and supervised by AMAC. There was considerable discussion, and we had some image of what they might be. Our final recommendation. If sometime in the future there is interest in reestablishing a Hebe-like situation in a more public position, and private funds can be raised, AMAC will consider its current position. In the interim, AMAC encourages new proposals for installations at the courthouse, or, the cat house, sorry, the courthouse, or on appropriate city property. That last part raised a whole bunch of things. Somebody said, you can see from this, and I can read from Mr. Klein's recommendations, that he thinks it would be fatal to try to put Hebe outdoors. To try to move her might be fatal because we don't know what happened to the inner structure. We don't know what's there. We know it's put together and it's very, it's stable where it is. It needs a coat of paint, maybe once a year or two, at the most. That's the maximum it needs to be taken care of, and it can be maintained in the value for what it is now. What do we do instead? There have been, there were discussions on the AMAC that, for instance, holograms be put, Hebe. Hebe originally was part of a group that was a fountain and a tall shaft that Hebe sat on top of, that was there at the corner of the courthouse. It was donated by the Young Women's Christian Temperance Association, a group of faculty members who made private donations and town and gown fundraising, put that all together to observe the growth and the development and the interesting new cultures of both Ohio University and the community as Athens was undergoing at the time when this all happened, in the late 1890s. That's where it comes from. It's why we speak about its cultural history and its role in the community. I have with me Mr. Klein's report. I have the report from the ad hoc committee, ably chaired by Councilman Butler. I am prepared to do whatever I can to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any questions from council members or the administration? Or comments? Mayor Wile?
I'm not aware of any particular meeting schedule going on with it, I guess. I should ask that question of the water treatment plant. When you say yearly paint, is it, I assume is to prevent corrosion, or just to--
I asked them, I wasn't going to come down here and talk to you guys about looking at this thing. So I went through all the procedures. I talked to Andy Stone. He got me released in there, because, you know, it's under guard. It's, because of 9/11, it's, have a water treatment plant's are under total security now. And so I got the opportunity to go down and look at her last week. I can see what Mr. Klein is referring to. They haven't painted it for some time. It is painted a kind of a matte gold finish, not a shiny gold. It's not, you know, just really garish and everything. It is typical, according to Mr. Klein's, that all of these zinc figures were painted even when they were initially made because you, zinc simply will not stand moisture. It will oxidize, it will do all kinds of strange things. I think Mr. Klein is suggesting perhaps once a year, a bucket of paint. I mean, it's a small piece. The statue itself is rather the size of, what, maybe a 12- or 13-year-old, normal-sized girl. It's not very large. And it's quite a nice, pretty piece of work that somebody did, modeled after a famous sculptor of the period. Somebody put some money into it. It was, it's an important cultural heritage of Athens, Ohio. The people down there have taken care of it. There was some discussion whether it should be a motion from us to make a motion to city council. The only motion we think of is to ask city council to move, somebody move that the water plants, treatment plants budget be increased by one bucket of paint and a couple of brushes a year, so that it wouldn't have to come out of their budget. But it's my understanding, it is my understanding that these guys rescued it from the trash heap, brought it in there, repaired it themselves, did all of the stuff, and the expert speaks well of their repairs. They're obviously not professionals, but they're, they're within the realm of acceptable conservancy. And that the thing looks good, and its repairs add to it, rather than detract from it, give it a certain charm that it's been through a tough time. It's painted one color. There's no reason to paint it anything else. It is a dull, goldish kind of color, and it's quite attractive in itself. And it's beginning to have little chips and little spackles from the fact that it hasn't been painted. I asked them when anybody remembered. It could be the last time it was painted. Nobody could remember. And so it could have been eight, 10 years ago, or something like that. One of the members, one of the employees down there, his father was-- One of the members, one of the employees down there, his father was one of the people that pulled it out of the trash heap and fixed it up when he was working for the water treatment plant. We have a lot to those people to save this piece of art.
Thank you, Ms. Winters.
Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, just briefly. Does the report, did the expert look at the fact that it's in a water treatment plant and the corrosive chemicals that are used, commonly used there?
It's not in that part of the water treatment plant. It is isolated into an, into a glassed-in hallway that sits kind of like a bridge in between.
Yeah, right in front there.
So that the furthest end of the building is the heavy chemicals and all of that on this side. The other end is the maintenance area, and this is sitting in its own little setting. You can see it from the street. And it has a tiny little kind of pottery, or not a pottery, a planter with a little hose sticking out so a little water comes out. It was originally a fountain. And in Mr. Klein's opinion, if you keep some paint on it and take care of it, it'll last forever. And if you put it outside, it's got no chance. I'm sorry that it's that way. I think everybody that dealt with this at some time or another, I even had great visions of putting it up on the ballast grate at the courthouse, you know, not thinking, but thinking that would be a nice place for it to be. But you just can't do that to zinc and expect it to survive.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the community?
Is this strong enough to make a casting of it? So you could make a --
Well, this is an irony, and I hope you'll appreciate the irony. They do have a duplicate of this made out of some kind of concrete or cement, which is now they've had to take down because it's been outside and it's weathered so badly they have to repair it. And this is out of concrete. So what does that tell you?
So they did cast it?
They made a, they made a sort of a duplicate of it. We talked about making a duplicate of it and putting a duplicate downtown. Where downtown probably? The place that we spoke about the most probably maybe was in the courthouse, Rotunda, or something like that. But again, how many people are going to see it and stuff? There's no question of putting it on the corner there Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. No piece like that would survive the vandalism and the people, it's not malicious, they're just out of control. Well, I mean, I've lived here for 40, since '62, and I've watched things change. And Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, they're out of control. I want to go down, beat some of them.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the community? Any other questions?
Yes.
Do I need to come up?
Sure. Thank you.
Please.
You brought up the second statue, Beverly Flanagan, North Lancaster Street. I was involved in this issue maybe 12, 10, 12 years ago, clearly before 9/11, because I went into the water building and saw the statue. It is lovely. But there was at that time another statue, obviously the duplicate, out in front, which was clearly more visible. Who goes into the water building? Who will see that lovely statue in the water building? I would, I think, given the condition of the statue, it will have to stay there. I agree with you. But I'm just wondering if there's any chance of resurrecting the duplicate or is it totally shot?
No, no. Let me respond to that. According to the people at the water treatment plant, when I've talked to them, they had it at that very moment back in their workshop resurrecting it. They had taken it down from the pedestal that it normally stands there in front of the place, and they had every intention of resurrecting and put it back out there in public view where people could at least look through the fence and the bar of water and everything. We don't know what's going to happen with security in the future. They were, they said to me frankly that the people that come around and check for the government, the security of all these facilities, say that this particular facility is the most secure that they know of anywhere. I'm also told, but so what does that mean? I don't know. I'm also told that when they're scheduled properly through the proper channels and through the people that should be done, that children's schools on school trips and stuff like that come through and get to see it and touch it and leave little coins in the can and stuff like that. So that's, that is happening. She has a hand sticking out there and there are coins and I don't know if they've been put there by the waterworks to generate magic weight or what, I don't know.
But my only point is if the other one could be improved, at least that could be more visible.
They say it will be there. They say they are doing that and that it will be put back in place. They've left the pedestal there. It's there waiting to have the repaired copy put on it.
Because at least driving toward West State Street Park, you can see it.
I mean, we're Athens. What are we going to do without the goddess of youth? Come on.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, considering that we do have a full agenda this evening? I would briefly like to mention real quick as well that I'm thankful for Mr. Goldsberry for his aid and assistance in this process. Phil Goldsberry was terribly positive and upbeat in this process and aided my subcommittee on a number of occasions when we met at the water building and also a couple of times we met. He offered information. I'd like to take this moment to acknowledge his community efforts here. He should be applauded for his voluntary civic service work and efforts to assist the subcommittee. He did a lot of research looking into the history of Hebe, which was alluded to by Mr. Winters this evening. The women's temperance movement started this process in the late 1800s. They raised $1,000 to purchase the Hebe Fountain and its base. That was a substantial amount of money for turn of the century. And their efforts at that time were to leave something with the city of Athens that would be beautiful, would have a history, would be memorable, and I think the Arts Commission understands and recognizes that as well, which is why this process took so long because there were a lot of--
A lot of emotions involved. I would also say that for those of you who might have some interest in it, there are actual copies, and Kent Butler has some of them, of the Athens Messenger in 1895, I believe it is, showing the Hebe statue and the water fountain and the whole thing mounted on the corner of the courthouse. There are records back through the Messenger's library of images that give you some sense of the history and the part that it played in Athens. Development.
I've got that picture on my office wall.
Thank you, Ms. Winters.
Thanks.
No further comments? I do not have any miscellaneous that I can think of. So I believe that is the end of Arts Parks Recreation Committee this evening.
On the Safety Services Committee, number two.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed roof and noise ordinance are on the Safety Committee agenda for tonight. As you know, an ad hoc committee began meeting to address some concerns regarding large parties in residential neighborhoods. The committee held three meetings, and at those meetings, I just wanted to say that there was never an attitude of permanent residents versus students, and there were students on the, on the ad hoc committee. I also want to say that we're all residents of the city of Athens, whether we are long-term residents or shorter-term residents, and it's important to have respect for each other, whether it's a student or a resident mowing grass at 10 o'clock in the evening or whether a resident is trying to study when there's a large, loud party going on. It may be 12 o'clock at night and you need to get some sleep if you have to go to work the next day. So the committee settled on two proposed ordinances, a roof ordinance, which a violation of could be used for determining a nuisance party violation, and changes to the noise ordinance. I've seen many supporting emails, and I've also seen a few emails that are not supporting at all. So tonight, we have an opportunity to ask questions of Chief Mayor, who's been kind enough to join us tonight, and also it's an opportunity to express opinions on the proposed ordinances. So would you like to come to the table or to the podium? So first of all, are there council members who have questions about either ordinance? I must say I haven't heard anything negative about the roof ordinance at all. I did email these to council members that I have copies with me. So if anyone needs a copy, would you like to pass those down? Is any, is anybody else interested? I have a few more. And I also have--
Maybe I have to-- Thanks. 226? I got the roof.
Members of the Senate?
Um--
Chief, or somebody, we, council passed what we call the noise ordinance restricting loud noises after certain hours. What does this add to that ordinance? Why do we--
It adds some additional conditions. It also adds some additional prono fascia sections in there, which gives us a little bit more authority when we deal with charges. We often run into situations where a court will say that, well, you need to have somebody complain, and there's no standard there that needs to be met. So we run into some problems there. So this is an effort to try and address those, try and create a certain more prono fascia situations, and also try and relieve the necessity in some situations of there needing to be a designated complaintant out there in the public to give the law enforcement a little bit more ability to respond to a noise complaint in a more proactive manner without going so far over that we become heavy-handed like some communities in the state are in regards to noise and other types of violations.
Okay. So will, will this, will this improve our noise ordinance or do we need to go back and look at that?
I believe this will improve our noise ordinance. This isn't the first change in noise ordinance. There was one back in 2006. There's another one that was back in the, at least in the late 70s, early 80s, which the court basically threw out, and there are some modifications made after that was thrown out by the court. So it's been an ongoing attempt to try and resolve issues as they arise and deals with noise in the community.
Chief Mayor, I do have a copy of the current noise ordinance, but I only have one. I didn't make extra copies. Could you perhaps tell us what's different, what the changes are?
I can try to here. We left in such things as the horns and seal devices. We left in animal noises. We left into, to a certain extent, the radio, stereo, and musical instruments. The previous one, which is radio and stereo, we add in the musical instruments as a part of that, and you'll see that in a lot of the different ordinances around the state of Ohio, that they include musical instruments in there. And we add the prono fascia in there too, that if it can be heard from the property line, Jason property line, that that can become prono fascia evidence. We talked about business, outside operations for businesses, and we talked about the number 12, which is the outdoor performances. One resident indicated that maybe I'd be better off in C, sound generated by devices or instruments. That's always an option. That would actually make it stronger if it was down there as opposed to up in this particular area here, which is in section B. And of course, we have the sound generated by devices or instruments. That's the current, similar to the current situation that we have. However, the time limits are changed to 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. And when I talked with the president of the Student Senate, he saw no problem with that at the time I talked to him. He may have changed his mind since then as he gets around more of his peers, but at that point in time, he was able to that particular limitation there. Then we also added a retaliation clause, which is found in the Kent, one in the Kent chief indicated, I mean, that they maybe one or two of those a year at most. With that in there, they haven't had the problems with retaliation before. If a resident or neighbor would complain, then people would start giving some harassment to them, maybe putting litter on their yards, noise, additional noise at times, phone calls, emails, things like that. And that has pretty much been curtailed by just having that included in the law. And of course, the penalty section was changed to increase some of the penalties, especially in regards to the retaliation one, which would be a much more serious type of offense. And that's basically it in summary. There was some stronger language we talked about, and this was the, basically the middle ground consensus that came out of the group.
I'm sorry, I did your, I see your hand up earlier.
Well, I just had a question as to whether this will, this new ordinance would make it more enforceable. And so if I'm understanding correctly, it adds language into doing--
I believe it will, but as with anything, until it goes before a judge, you really don't have a full understanding of what it may do, how the judge might take it. And even when judges change, sometimes they take things differently.
Okay. And then I also noticed there's an exemptions clause in here that allows events officially sponsored by the city or other events that the city would approve, like the Board of Education.
Yes. Now it includes parade permits, things like that, following those.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Fall?
I just, this is a comment that I got from a citizen. Because it's property line, that certain parts of the city, it's, the noise ordinance ends up being a lot more robust than in other parts of the city. I mean, like, I live on, in the Near East side, and there are people who play music on their front porch, and their property line is only about six feet away. So how, on a policy level, how do the police look at that? I mean, how does that deal with more dense neighborhoods versus less dense neighborhoods?
There are some times when the officers take, try and take that into consideration and maybe try and talk with the residents to try and address those issues. Of course, if it's acoustic guitars, a little bit different, that, I think acoustic guitars about 70 or 60 decibels within a foot of the instrument. So you follow the way, it starts dropping off, and 50, you're getting down to regular street noise. So, you know, you get into those types of issues there.
I'm sorry. She, she told me first.
Chief Mayor, is this a complaint-based or a non-complaint-based system?
Combination.
Okay. So in other words, will the majority of the calls be complaints? Or are the officers going to drive around looking for noise?
I don't think the officer is going to necessarily be driving around looking for noise per se. They can still do that. Right now, we do it after 11 o'clock or midnight, after 10 o'clock or midnight. However, the court currently is even asking us to give warnings even at that point. So the vast majority of people have the understanding that they can make noise until we come around and give them a warning. And so hopefully this will take care of that issue so that we can take more proactive action on those situations and that people won't have the idea that they can just make as much noise as they want to until we show up, and then from that point on, they'll be quiet.
You mean the second time? The second time?
Second time, they could be cited.
Okay. So you're talking about a verbal warning or a written warning?
We don't do written warnings. We do verbal warnings.
Okay. Okay. So when we talk about having roughly eight hundred calls, and half of them being, ending up in a warning, we're talking about verbal warnings at that point, right?
We've got about two thousand a year noise complaints that end up having actual action on. Of those, about a quarter of those do get citations. Most of those are ones that have occurred after ten or midnight. Most of those are the ones that have occurred after we've already given a warning.
And many of those are called in by other students, right?
They may be called in by other students.
Majority, actually, in the past, at least, that was the case.
I don't know, I don't have those statistics.
I know that was certainly. Okay. So how will, I mean, there's changes, and you're asking us, you and the committee are asking us to go ahead, and so what changes specifically will we see on the ground? If it's complaint to non-complaint, it may be easier to enforce, you say, will there be more citations or fewer? I mean, what, what exact, what's new?
The prima facie issues is what I talked about, that it gives us ability to take action immediately, rather than necessarily give out warnings. And there's going to be a learning curve issue here, that we're going to have to educate not only the students, the general public and that, the officers as to what's involved in the ordinance, and how it's going to be perceived, and how it's going to be worked with, so that everybody has a common, as common an understanding as possible, so that we can go forward with it. And my hope would be that, over a period of time, there would be a reduction in the noise at the onset, so that instead of a party getting too loud, and somebody having to call in, the students and other people in that they're having, well, parties would curtail it to begin with, keep it down, so it doesn't reach that level where it becomes an annoyance to the other residents in the neighborhood.
So is, do you offer some assurance that it will be relatively uniformly enforced with this prima facie addition?
I believe it will.
I mean, or how will we know? Will be the question. I mean, if somebody gets a warning, someone gets a ticket, how will?
So it'll come down to the determination of the court as to what their parameters are on this when we start doing the enforcement. But my anticipation would be that we would, as we do most all other violations, be as equitable as possible in trying to deal with those situations. And each situation can be unique in many ways.
I mean, sometimes, somebody recounted to me that the police, a police car was driving by, and the fellows were on the porch in Finals Week, and they were hooping it up, and the police officer just went, and they turned the stereo down. I mean, he didn't have to get out of the car, he didn't have to say anything, he just, they knew he'd be back. But, you know, the other part that I, my last question really involves community policing, and I guess I'd like to go back to some things that used to happen, I'm not sure they do anymore, where people who lived in neighborhoods would call their neighbors and say, we're going to have a party. In fact, I was in Pittsburgh last week, or at Halloween, and they said, we're going to have a party. If we get too loud, here's the phone number, call us. And, you know, is this going to stand in the way of that kind of sort of civic behavior that has been characteristic of some of the closer neighborhoods in the past?
That has, that has happened in the past, and that, even in Palma, when there was still a number of full-time residents that lived on Palma, they would go around, check with their neighbors, make sure it was all right. The problem is, what about the neighborhoods beyond those lines, which are not getting the courtesy of being contacted and getting permission?
You're talking about a wild party. I'm just talking about a relatively contained party. Okay. So it's complaint and non-complaint in the main addition. I mean, I just don't want to have something in here that I wasn't totally aware of, and you can understand that, because it's a relatively contentious issue. Thank you.
Member?
Members first. This is, it's being billed as changes, but if you look at Kent's ordinance, which is based on, basically, this is replacing our ordinance, our existing ordinance, almost wholesale, is that correct?
It's taken the Kent one and placed in there the parts of ours that we like, and took out a few of the pieces of the Kent ordinance.
It seems to be almost verbatim what Kent's is, at this point, at least the draft.
In some of the sections, yes.
And, I mean, it even references a phonograph, which I don't imagine would be much of a noise problem anymore these days. I'm wondering if, you know, I think it's being billed as more than it is. Our noise ordinance, the way it is now, already prohibits any louder unusual noise that disturbs the peace and quiet, any time of day. That's the way our noise ordinance is written now, and I understand there's some enforcement issues with that. But that's the language that's there, and not too dissimilar from the proposed new language. You know, Kent has the same problems we do. Last April, they had an end-of, end-of-year college block party riot. So even with this in place, it's not going to solve, solve a lot of our problems, and some of the people that have contacted me have been of, have the impression that with this in place, we won't have any noise problems anymore, and I don't believe that that's going to be the case.
I would agree with that statement.
A few of the big things that this does, it's already been touched on, one is the prima facie evidence. It exists now. It's after ten PM, I believe, on certain days, and--
Sunday night through Thursday night.
Okay. And then it's eleven on--
Midnight on the other two.
Midnight on Friday and Saturday. And so this would take that out entirely, and it would be prima facie evidence, according to section B two. Any time of day, if there's any, any noise whatsoever, it could result in a ticket without any complaint, and that's what members--
You know, one section, another section talks about from nine PM to eight AM.
So are those two conflicting or not?
No. I don't believe they are.
So that would change the ten PM midnight rule to nine PM?
Yes.
Okay. The other two big things, one is outdoor performances, and they would be, this proposed that they would be banned outright, is that correct?
They're not banned outright by this ordinance.
So what restrictions would be on these outdoor performances?
There, that would be, if it's not prima facie, that would be complaint-based.
The other thing that jumped out at me was the penalty section is much stronger than what we currently have. I don't know what fines are for noise violations now, it's not stated in our current ordinance, it's just a fourth-degree misdemeanor. But this would put a fine in of up to a thousand dollars and thirty days in jail for a first violation on a noise ordinance?
The current one, I believe, is, fourth-degree misdemeanor is two hundred and fifty dollars and up to thirty days in jail.
Two fifty. So the fines would be increased, but--
But the court has the--
But the court has the, for their flexibility.
Yes.
The only other issue I, or question I had was with the, with the other proposed ordinance, the rooftop ordinance, and I think it's, it would be great to have that in place, because that's one of the things the city can do proactively to make things safer for students. I am not sure about the second section, where it says that it could be used as nuisance party justification in and of itself. So would that mean with no other, with nothing else going on, if there were just people on a roof, then it could be a nuisance party?
No. The intent there is that we receive a complaint about noise, or some other problem in a particular residence, we went there, there's people on the roof, that we could order them off and that, and if they didn't get off for this year, then that would also then be an additional factor for nuisance party.
The nuisance party ordinance currently only requires one, not violation, one condition.
One violation, right.
So the other condition would be enough without the rooftop by itself?
Correct. However, administratively, we look at trying to get up to about four, and then the supervisor signs off on it, and then we take action, or we can take and get one. And that's something sort of the, in a situation like we had before, with the court saying, well, you have to have all four proven before you can get the nuisance party, now we just have to have the one.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other--
I was just going to comment just briefly on, you know, we talked about the prima facie versus the complaint-based, and from a prosecutor's standpoint, what this comes down to, and what makes this easier as a prima facie violation, is just that's something where an officer that is on the scene is able to testify, him or herself, about, you know, what was heard. And so in the case of, you know, in section two or in section eleven, you can say, well, you know, something, you know, we were able to hear, you know, during the prescribed times, we were able to hear the noise fifty feet from a building, boom, that's prima facie, the officer can testify to that. On some of the other sections that are more complaint-based, you know, some of the difficulties we've had in the past is, you know, some people are uncomfortable coming forward, certainly if it means having to come and testify, you know, in an open court. I mean, there are certainly some citizens that are more than happy to do that, but many are not. And so, and some of these other situations, such as, you know, look in section ten, where it talks about unreasonably interfering with working of institutions, or disturbing, or unduly annoying patients. Well, if someone were cited under that section of this code, then we would, we would have to bring in a patient to testify to, you know, for us to be able to satisfy the evidentiary burden that, you know, that a patient was, was annoyed by the noise. So that's kind of the difference when we talk about the prima facie versus the complaint-based, is as it pertains to the prosecutions. I just wanted to kind of expand on that, and then I guess my only other comment, just in section nine, I guess I would just ask that we try to find some gender-neutral language there for the service safety director, since it refers to he threw out and followed, appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might add, too, that in item twelve, the outdoor performances, basically, what's hoped that that might cause, too, is if we get a complaint about a band or something going on, that we can go to that location, we have an officer at one location, shut it down, that, yeah, they just shut down, then we can say, that's the one that was causing the problem, and we can take enforcement action. Right now is, where is, where's the band that's causing the noise? And it's real hard, and real difficult to try and prove that in court. So that's one of the reasons why we hope that that section will help out.
Dr. Winters?
I'm Bob.
Bob. Winters, if you could come up, please.
I would like to, at this time, I'm just trying to get close enough to this, so that I point out to you that the AMAC, some years ago, put together and passed through city council, a procedure for approving outdoor performances that were public performances, that there were a series of rules, dealing with legalities, liabilities, safety, all the things that are required by the state regulations and everything, and required permits from the city for these kinds of performances to happen. Now, I'm talking about formal things, things like down in the bicentennial park, or on the baseball fields, except for lights. But you understand what I'm saying. I'm trying to say that there would have to be consideration for the neighbors, it's a rather, well, completely worded thing. It does not deal with somebody who impromptu decides to have a party one night, and I think that's more what you're, you're talking about here. But I wanted to remind you that on the books, there is this procedure that deals with the authorization of public performances through AMAC by city council and by city administration.
I believe that Member Butler provided that to us. Thank you. I know there's concern about enforcement, and we don't want to get the impression this is going to solve all the, solve all the problems. Some of it will depend upon the manpower available, the officers who are available to answer complaints. There could be a robbery going on somewhere at the same time, and there just wouldn't be the manpower to, to deal with every, every noise complaint. So I just sort of wanted to point that out, that it's not going to solve all the problems. It's not going to be perfect, but hopefully, this will help. Was there someone else in the audience? Yes.
My name is Joan Kornansky, and I was on the ad hoc committee that was chaired by Chief Mayor, representing the West Side Neighborhood Association, and our concern over noise wasn't about, although it was also about what goes on in the very heavily concentrated student areas on Mill Street, our concerns were about the noise that goes on in the west side. And I think many of you may not be aware of that, but we have many residents that are plagued by noise that made it very difficult for them to continue leading their lives. Many of them moved out. My neighborhood had that situation go on, to the point that half of Mound Street, I live on the north side of Mound Street, but the south side of Mound Street is now all rentals. And it was because of the noise. So the ordinance is about noises and not encouraging the continuation of the situation that we see as almost intolerable. I did go through the old ordinance, the original noise ordinance that we worked with, and the revised ordinance that was pretty, for the most part, almost identical to the Kent ordinance. Unfortunately, I only have three copies, but I think since you've been through some of the changes from one ordinance to the other, and Chief Mayor did, had a lot of conversation about it, I'd like to read through the changes as I saw them. Now, I only have three copies, so you're going to have to share, big time I ran out of ink. So I don't know who wants to get closer to you, but I'm getting ready anyways, but there are a few points on this sheet that, I, that are corrections, if council would, the committee would care to go forward with this, and if you do make some changes to it, that I'd like to recommend, Chief Mayor, and I didn't agree on these, but we discussed them. Some of them are in accordance with how Kent was originally set up. So let me go through this. In the, in the current ordinance, section A had to do with definitions, and basically, in the new ordinance, we just eliminated that section and replaced it with the definition of unlawful noise. Section B, there were some changes, but basically, under the proposed ordinance, we replaced all the types of acts, primarily with what Kent had, with several exceptions, and we incorporated into section B some of the items that were in our original ordinance, things about construction and repair of buildings, schools, courts, churches, and hospitals. And I would think, most importantly, we added outdoor performances. There were some people on the committee that felt that outdoor performances should be banned completely in residential areas, because we have so many venues in Athens, both public and private, where these types of activities can go on. And I think, as it was noted, a lot of the complaints about noise come from students who are trying to study and live their lives, but they also come from residents who are trying to read a book and live their lives, I don't know, whatever. So aside from the acts that, for the most part, all the acts that were in the original ordinance under section B remain in this ordinance, with, with the exception of the inclusion of outdoor performance section, which was added. And in the ordinance, it states, this applies to performances intended directly or indirectly to be productions or presentations. And the way I define this is not to mean private events. But there are many, several people that took, had some difficulty with the word intended in that section under outdoor-- in that section under outdoor performances. Because it's ambiguous, I talked to an attorney, and she said she, that it would be very difficult to enforce intended. So one of the suggestions I'd like to see is the word intended struck. And it would read this applies to performances directly or indirectly to productions or presentations. In the Kent, and so following Section B, the last item being 12, outdoor performances, is Section C. Now, the Athens City Noise Ordinance did not have a Section C. And what Section C does is defines the limitations on the acts listed in B and gives the APD enforcement abilities rather than requiring a complaint call to initiate police enforcement. So someone could call, but if the police arrive on the scene and they can hear, and I think this has already been discussed, then they can go right to the site and first issue a warning, and then second, go back and issue a violation if necessary. In the Kent ordinance, outdoor performances is placed below C because what C does is put into place hours that these various acts can go on between, on private property between 8:01 a.m. and 8:59 p.m. And some of us on the committee, I would be one of them. And a lot of this is feedback from other members in the community on the West Side that we do not feel outdoor performances should be allowed at any time in a residential area. So if you want to take it to a business area or manufacturing area or university property, any bar uptown, the community center, city property, we have so many spaces for recreation, music recreation, that we do not think that it's necessary to go on in residential neighborhoods. So I did C. So under the left-hand column, you get down to C where there was, organizational liabilities were replaced with D in the proposed ordinance, which defines ownership of the violation, which is something that wasn't in the original one. E and F were added from the Kent ordinance, which define exemptions which were not included in the original Athens ordinance. So anyone that wanted to have an outdoor event on public or state property, let me look here, would have to abide by city regulations such as Halloween, boogie-on-the-bricks, I suppose. That would include. Section G was added, which wasn't in the original ordinance. And that has to do with retaliation. I think some people had some questions about that, but my understanding is there's a state law on retaliation anyways that would trump this. I mean, we didn't have any exactly have it as defined as this, but there are, you know, this, I don't think this overrides anything the state's going to say, and I don't think it's out of line or out of character. And then penalties, which are more than just consequences of breaking the law. I'd like to read you some comments that we've received from our neighborhood association. I'm talking about people living on the West Side that either have families, or couples, or singles, whatever, you know. This is from Laura Post. She couldn't be here tonight, but she supports this issue. And she goes on to say, "I feel most affected by the noise on our street. It seems that almost every time my 10-month-old son is being put down for a nap or bedtime, there's unnecessarily loud noise or band practice taking place that keeps him up. As some of you know, parenthood is already challenging. Enough without having to tolerate college mayhem. The last 10 months of battling the noise and trying to find peace for our family has created more stress and exhaustion than needed." So you know how we feel about the noise ordinance. Feel free to use my name. A few of the other comments I have here are from people on the West Side, around Miller Street, which is in person Second Street area. And maybe some of the things that, why we feel compelled about these outdoor performances or production or presentation in residential neighborhoods, is that there are places in the West Side where people rent houses just to do band practice. I'm going to tell a story, and I won't use all the graphics.
We're getting, we're getting close to the three minutes, or?
And this is what happens to people. I'll make this very quick, right? Block and a half away from me, a group of young men moved in with their band equipment. The person next door, who was a single woman, not younger but older, retired, went and said, "Could you please stop that? Could you please tone it down? It is out of control." And they laughed at her. Someone lived across the street, young couple, man's pretty burly, and they had a child. And the noise was so loud, he went over there, and I won't repeat what he said to them.
Thank you.
They packed up their stuff and left. And so those of us that get, don't have that kind of brute force in the neighborhood, I mean, you, I'm assuming none of you have this experience, but these are the kinds of things that go on in the West Side. And so we feel that stringent, more stringent regulations for band performance, outdoor performance, need to happen in this town. After all, when the university no longer had its spring festival down on the green that it controlled, and all of that activity was dumped into the neighborhoods, and the city wasn't prepared for that. And so we're almost doing catch-up now. And it was good to build on the original ordinance. And I've talked to some of you. Some of you have questions about in your little sphere of space and playing your radios or Johnny Cash or whatever we're going to listen to. All I want to say is, those issues were already addressed in the original ordinance that we have on the books. And so if you weren't popped off by APD already, you probably aren't under this ordinance. But what I'm really hoping to do is to squelch the music activity in the neighborhoods, not to squelch the music.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I was anticipating that we would have some students here tonight to speak as well. Are there, are there any students available?
I talked to, I talked to one of the students that was on the ad hoc committee, but she had another obligation and wasn't able to make it.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else, Mayor?
So I assume this is, if I remember this, started out with the idea of permitting car and flat music to start with. Wasn't that the original goal of the task force at one point? To create a permitting system?
Yes, that was the original. That sort of went down the tubes at the first meeting.
Just so I know where it started from, okay.
Yes, it did.
I assume this is going to be up for first readings soon?
Well, that's, this is something that I really don't think we should attempt an emergency clause on, and I think we should have all three meetings because of the controversy, all three readings because of the controversy. So, and I'll have to check the timeline, but I'm not sure that we can get this accomplished before the students leave.
I have no problem with that. I'm just wondering if it's going to go out of committee, that's all. I'm not trying to push it. I'm just asking the status.
That's what, that's what I believe our intention is, to bring it up for a first reading. I'm just not sure exactly when.
Okay.
Did some?
I'm just going to suggest that, as this is the first day of the quarter, that we maybe have this on the next agenda for our next committee meeting.
I think we can do HEBY and the ball.
To give a chance for, if there are students that have an interest in it, for them to make their voice heard.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. Yes.
I believe I have an up, I'm scheduled to talk to the Student Senate this Wednesday, I believe. I can bring this up to their purview and see where it goes from there. I have no problem with another committee meeting. Again, I think it should move ahead, but whatever pace you choose.
Okay.
From personal experience, I sure would like to see this rooftop ordinance in effect before the first festival, just saying.
Well, there doesn't seem to be.
It'd be nice to be able to.
I don't see why we can't bring that one forward because I haven't heard anything negative about it. Member Bean?
I just wanted to make sure that in the ordinance itself, I noticed Joni using almost a zoning example in the definition of residential and business and manufacturing. And I think we need to clarify because there are houses that are mixed in with businesses. And so the B zone uptown would be a different, whatever B it is, would be a different one from the R3s. And I think there are other places where we do use zoning designations. Zone, where's Joni? Yeah, isn't that what you were doing? Is that your zoning board coming out, sort of using a zoning board definition of neighborhoods?
Yes, residential as opposed to?
And residential as defined on the map? Is that what you're?
R1, R2, R3.
Right, and that's your definition?
Right, correct.
Because there are residences uptown, Second Street. Okay. I just think that needs to be added.
Okay. Did you?
I'm not sure if you really need to put residential areas in there. I think all, you know, noise is noise regardless of where you put it. When you start saying, okay, R1s, R2s, R3s, okay, what about open spaces where you can say, let's go to West State Street Park, set up a band, and just blast it out, and it will carry. EI zones, which we have a big one in on the Riches, that could project quite well. You know, we do have B1s that are on East State Street that you could refer out of here within the R zones?
I was just listening to what the committee member who was talking said, and I thought that that could be ambiguous if, because there are residences and businesses mixed in some zones. That's all I was after.
Okay. Did I see another hand? Mr. Silleri?
I'm Jim Silleri. I live at 36 Fairview Avenue. I came to town as a city prosecutor in 1974 before there was any, quote, noise ordinance. Although we had an ordinance that served us well, that says you can't cause inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm to another by excessive noise. Part of the difficulty with the noise ordinance that then introduced ours is that many people, and some police included, felt that people were free to make as much noise as they wanted to, as long as it was before those hours. And I think that the intent now of certainly our committee, and I was on that, on this committee, was to get back to the idea that you have rights to listen to music, you have rights to play music, but those rights end at your property line. They certainly end when that noise that you make causes inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm to your neighbor. You don't have that right. And I've read in the paper where some students say, "We've got a right to have these bands." Well, it's really, by definition, a live band in a residential or an R neighborhood, by definition, is going to violate the noise ordinance, it's going to cause inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm to other people who don't want to listen to that. Our friends and neighbors who live in the senior citizens housing, other citizens who live in fairly close proximity, and in some cases, some of us who don't even live in close proximity. After two hours of the bass pounding with our windows closed, tends to get on you. So, you know, I urge the council to pass this. And the mayor brought up an excellent point, that, well, you might move to a neighborhood that's not an R neighborhood, and that noise will carry as well, and perhaps then we'll have to look at that and deal with that. But certainly, the R neighborhoods are not appropriate places for the, for the kind of activities that festivals are. And a lot of, a lot of the changes, you know, have come about just because when I was city prosecutor, there weren't student neighborhoods. Mill Street was all single-family, traditional family neighborhoods, as was Congress Street and Hocking Street and all of those other neighborhoods. Frankly, I wrote a letter to City Council in 1984 because I'd been on the zoning board for several years, and matters were starting to come before the zoning board dealing with what have become student rentals. And I suggested to City Council at that time that this is really time to look at this as a zoning issue. Because raising kids myself and having been a college student myself at one time many years ago, I knew that the lifestyles of college students were in certain cases incompatible with those of us who get up at 5:30 in the morning and go to work every day. And unfortunately, I think, I think the city missed an opportunity to control the spread of those neighborhoods by zoning. Now, fortunately, I think we have to ensure that all residents treat all other residents with respect and courtesy.
Yes. Thank you. Mayor?
I realize a lot of thought has gone into this, and I'd like to thank the committee for putting this together, actually. I'm aware of the fact that just, I have, I have probably gotten about a tenth of the emails that went back and forth from what I understand. So I understand a lot of discussion with this. And thanks to the chief and all the members of the task force that did this.
I second that. Yes.
Can I just make one last comment?
Sure.
Beverly Flanagan, North Lancaster. I hope Ms. Coon, you're not considering my letter negative. I, you all have the copy of my long letter. I'm very positive about this. All I want is a little more tightening of the language to be sure that we don't run into problems when we go to court, if we have to go to court. We generally wouldn't have to, perhaps, but if we do, we need the certainty that, for example, vague terms like intention, referred to by Joni, will not trip us up. Intention is a mental state. How do you judge that? How does a judge in court judge that? We would probably lose on that count. And then one of the phrases I noted was unduly making noise and excessive noise. Again, could we get some quantification on this? In the old ordinance, didn't we have 50 feet as a limit? Noise could not travel beyond 50 feet, but we have some houses that are only six feet apart. So how do we reconcile those two? If we could somehow get some numbers on this, but I understand that the decibel monitor is broken. If we could, you know, firm this up again, we used to have a decibel count, and we used to have the 50-feet rule. I don't know what happened to those, but could we bring some of that tightness back? Then this would be a wonderful ordinance, and I totally support it, with the hope that we could just make it a little more airtight. Thank you.
Thank you.
It had, doesn't Section 11 have 50 feet from building? That would be B11, 85 decibels. Section C has 2, C2 has 30 feet.
Okay, the decibels we can't measure apparently, but the feet.
Well, it's covering both of them, so it should work. Well, it's covering both of them, so it should work.
Mayor, that's specifically for businesses on 11, and the C2 is on streets or highways in the third right of ways.
Okay.
So it doesn't apply to the other aspects of...
Okay.
So, Chief Mayor, will you be able to do some fine tuning, tuning to, to the ordinance, or would you like to wait until after the committee meets again?
There wasn't any, you mean the council committee?
Yes, I do, the council committee meeting, yes, not the ad hoc committee meeting.
The only, the only thing I can say that you could possibly add in there, and I'd have to run this by the law director, is looking at Lancaster's language in regards to measuring a sound, and it talks about plainly audible means any sound produced by a radio, tape player, other mechanical device, so forth and that. It talks about measurement, any law enforcement personnel who hears a sound that is plainly audible, as defined herein, shall be entitled to measure the sound according to the following standards. It's got, and I put two of them in this particular one here. Primary means of detection shall be by means of the officer's ordinary auditory senses, his ears, as long as the officer's hearing is not enhanced by any mechanical device such as a microphone or varying aid. And also, the officer need not determine the particular words or phrases being produced, or the name of any song or artist producing the sound. And also, as a detection of rhythmic bass reverberating type sound, sufficient to constitute a plainly audible sound. I think Mr. Silleri mentioned that, the bass bouncing that around for a while. So, you could just plug in that Lancaster section about sound detection, and that's also in the Bree, Ohio ordinance, which is also a college town.
Okay.
And certainly any language, I don't know who's the point person on council for some of these language tweaks, absolutely, I've talked to a couple of you individually, but as we tweak this language, certainly I would welcome an opportunity to have some input on that, and particularly on some of the things that Beverly...
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we'll discuss this again, to give students an opportunity to participate, express their opinions at the next regular council meeting, but in the meantime, we'll go forward with the roof ordinance. The council committee meeting. Okay.
And I don't know if it was discussed on the roof ordinance, but I think that, I mean, just, if there was a will on the part of council to do that as an emergency, I think that that would be some possible justification for that, just given the Spring Fest coming up.
Okay, if everybody's comfortable with that, okay.
I just have a question. There's section one, section two. Section one says, no person shall occupy a roof or porch roof of any structure when officers are citing or have cited violations of city noise, et cetera, et cetera. Is that the only time?
That, I believe that's correct, is that, that was...
You can...
You can hang out on your roof as long as the police don't have to show up, yes.
Okay. As long as it's the attention.
Okay. We'll go.
It's late, all right? I wouldn't say so.
Dancing.
No, I mean, I think it's not, it's mainly trying to attack a very specific...
Some people are better on a really high...
Okay, that's all I have. I don't have anything else under miscellaneous. But Chief Mayor, will you be available to come back at the next?
I should be.
Council committee meeting, okay, thank you. That's all for the safety committee.
On planning and development?
Great, thank you. The first item on the agenda, now that everybody's leaving, nobody wants to talk about annexation? Thank you. We'll, uh, let everybody leave. Actually, the petition for annexation on One Old Peach Ridge Road, the person who's making the petition is not here tonight, right? So I really don't want to go forward without, without the person being in attendance. So we'll move on to the second item. Go ahead.
I would mention, I asked my administration whether there was water service and sewer service, I was told there is.
Okay.
That would be my own concern, I don't know that the lay of the land there.
Right.
I think the other concern, of course, is I think some of the land, we're talking about, the lot we're talking about, it's actually appropriate to annex it, and if you notice, it's on this side of 33, but also, I think it has frontage on both Columbia and Old Peach Road, Ridge Road, so we might want to make sure of that.
Is there a question about the address? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's a question, a lot split. Could we service both of them if they get split? I don't know.
One is the, one at the, at the end. You have the Peach Ridge? I'm asking.
I believe it is, it's about eight acres all the way to the back.
Yeah, Cantor's house.
It's about 33, I think it's mostly vertical.
Okay. So that's, that's why I want the applicant to be here, to address these issues, and that's not possible tonight. And also, Pat, you want to address it?
I was going to give a little background on just the, the particular annexation tool being requested here, but if it maybe make more sense just to go ahead and wait and do that, and address it all at one time.
I think that would be, that would make more sense, because then we can have questions answered by the applicant, and such. And it's late tonight, so, okay. Second one, item, is the revocable license for 22 May Avenue, which is a right-of-way revocable license to put a fence in the right-of-way. And the application came in for this, and the one that came to the city does not have the administration signature page with it, so if you could forward that, and then it will be up to date, and I don't see any problems.
We should have sent you an email that said not to even review that one tonight, because it has not gone to the administrative process.
John, sit by the microphone.
So you're saying that it's not fully...
Yeah, let us get on top of that one, and handle that one, because apparently the applicant filled out the front part, and didn't do the back part, I think, so.
So it's more of a question of the application is not fully filled out?
Well, we have to complete the backside through the administrative process.
Okay.
Within our offices.
So I will bring that up the next committee.
Yeah, we'll get, let us get everything done, and we'll send it back up.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving right along on miscellaneous, see mine's nice and quick. I just wanted to bring to your attention the email that was sent out to you about the contractor registration legislation, some of the changes that we've made between, Kathy and John have made, addressing some of the concerns and questions that were brought up at the last committee meeting. I would like to bring this forward, so, I know everybody got the email, I have a copy here. Basically, I just wanted, there was some questions last committee meeting, just want to reiterate that the purposes of the contractor registration is to capture income tax for citizen protection, namely contractor, contractor information on file with the code enforcement office, meaning that if you have problems or you have a question a couple months later, you don't have paperwork and get the information. Making sure that contractors have liability insurance. And the Title III, Title 31 is updated, making it easier and more straightforward. And this also will comply with Attorney General's recommendation, this mainly has to do with FEMA regulations, and this will help expedite any sort of FEMA and life and insurance, if there is a major emergency or a major catastrophe in Athens, such as a flood. We've made some changes, we've put in some trades, such as drywall decks, fireplaces, decked-in-finished trades to 111009, 08, and we've renumbered it. John put together a fee comparison chart that compares Athens, the proposed cost for Athens compared with the surrounding towns and Columbus, and we are with, we are right in the general ballpark of the cost, the fee, for everybody else. So I think we did talk about, Ilahou had some questions about the difference between having two different fees, and we, that would be administratively just a lot more difficult. And right now, we did discuss the fact that this is a cost of business, and it is, you know, a write-down on your taxes, so there is that, that issue that it is a cost of business. And that there was some discussion about, confusion between this is registering, not licensing. So we decided to remove Section C from 111010, where it talks about revocation, about the city, it's clarifying what the city will do. This is not providing referrals or references for businesses, it's not following or enforcing any sort of complaints. The city will act as a referral service to give people phone numbers or places that they can go if they have questions or concerns about the work that was done, such as the Better Business Bureau or the Attorney General. But that, issues with workmanship shall be dealt with through the contractor, the Better Business Bureau, or other legal avenues, and that compliance, compliments or complaints would not be encouraged. The city would receive them, but they're not going to be encouraged, it's not going to be. So we're, it's a registration, not a licensing, sort of thing, so that removing Section C will help to define that. So, if you have questions about this, I'd like to bring it up on Monday.
So you drop the bond.
No, no, the bond's here.
Did everybody get the latest email? Nancy had some questions, and I responded this afternoon.
There's the bond, there's still the bond, there's still the liability requirements.
Well, we just got, Nancy sent this email out, and had some questions about some of the stuff, and I didn't respond till this afternoon, but, and John and I just spoke, she suggested that we skip the bond, you know, we really aren't registering, we're not, you know, we should be limited on what we're requiring, and that the liability insurance, and actually, Chris, we discussed this on Friday, you know, the difference between a bond and liability insurance, and what covers what. And so we would agree with just having the workers' comp and liability insurance only, take the bond out. Because we aren't monitoring the workmanship or anything else, we really are just registering, and we just want a list, a reference point for people who hire somebody, and then say, uh-oh, what happened, and, you know, or they can ask them upfront, I guess, is my feeling, if people know this is available, and somebody knocks on their door, they can ask upfront, and they'll at least know that the city has checked their, you know, credentials to some extent. But we would be fine with, with dropping the bonding.
But adding workers' comp, right?
Well, I think we maybe look into that a little deeper, too, because other cities are dropping it. I've talked to, Pickerington already has, and some of others have already kept it, and we need to find out, it's in this situation, we had a situation just a couple weeks ago, maybe where a contractor was driving a piece of equipment on a road that tore up the road, and would that surty bond pay for the damage done on that road if we had a bond versus liability insurance? So it's becoming an issue between insurance companies and the surty agencies, as to what we can and cannot have, so, or what we can get out of them, basically, if the surty bond actually works. I'm being told by a lot of contractors and through other cities that the surty bond hasn't been standing up, but they, they're going back on the liability insurance of these companies to do that damage, and we would definitely make sure they would have that. But I think, I ought to do a little bit, this just came about in the last day or so, that I actually need to find out more about these surty bonds, and if there is damage done to the public infrastructure or the streets, does the surty bond take care of it, or does it come back on the liability insurance of the contractor? So...
Could we, could we go forward with this, and then, after a year, tell us what the bond situation is, so we know what, you know, what's going on, rather than wait? If you say, I mean, because I heard somebody quote you saying that the people were dropping them because they weren't working.
That, that is, that's what Pickerington did.
That's what, okay, so I did hear correctly, Beth.
Yeah, that's what I'm being told from other contractors, as well as some of the cities, that they have started dropping them, but that's obviously a question between legal and insurance agencies that I honestly can't answer, and I just need to do a little more research on it.
Well, and we talked on Friday at our meeting about how the bond is mostly for city protection.
Right.
And so we have to make sure that the liability insurance would cover the ideas of what the bond would have covered.
Right, and liability insurance should cover any damage that's done on the public side as well, but...
Wouldn't the damage also, John, also mostly come when you're doing a subdivision? And wouldn't the bond in that case? I mean, I can't, I, people are working all around me, and I can't imagine they're going to do one...
Somebody putting addition on their house that strikes the gas line, or a city water line. Gas line wouldn't be an issue.
Well, they solved the problem remodeling.
What? Gas line, I guess, wouldn't count, because that's not city-owned, but water or sewer line, and, or, the case we had the other day, like, for instance, a piece of equipment with steel tracks that were maybe inching into the road a little bit, so, I don't know the, if, how, where that stands. Columbus said they're still enforcing it, they're still requiring it.
They have a million people, right?
Yeah, I guess they feel that they can collect, and as you can see on the list, other cities are still doing it, so, I'd like to, Kathy and I just talked, you know, if it was part of it to get this to go through, then obviously we'd be willing to listen, but I'd like to see it stay in till we know for a fact that it's not working, and then we take it out, instead of trying to add it later.
Since I'm the one who is the instigator in this, I guess I would say that, since we have only so much time, as with the police, and I just wonder how much it will take to administer the bond. I mean, what, how, what's the cost? How many are you expecting to register, and what will be the cost of adding the bond to workers' comp and liability insurance?
A cost for a $15,000 bond, usually about 100 to 120 bucks. And my idea was, if we have a June 1st to June 1st application process or registration process, then that would be the date the bond would go into effect as well. So we wouldn't have any bonds lapsing during somebody's registration, if we make it date-wise be the same. So, if we get this started by June...
Because a bond is, in a sense, in effect, an insurance policy.
Right.
So that means that the cost of registration is now 250.
Well, I had, I said two...
For two people, or 25 or 30 people?
Yes, 200 for the reg, application, registration, and then whatever their bonding agency charges them for their bond, correct, which is what we said before, about 200.
And liability insurance, as a rider on a homeowner's, I have it, it's about 200 bucks, for 2 million.
Not for a contractor.
No, no, well, for driving vans and other things like that, but 2 million, you know, and it's a rider on the homeowner's, but... Is, electrical and plumbing have to have bonds, is that...
Currently, they do have to have bonds with the city, and it's only for $1,000, but their bond, most of the bonding agencies are charging, are giving, they'll charge $100 for a $1,000 certificate, as much as they will for a $15,000 certificate, so that's why we went ahead and went with that number, and increased the amount of the bond.
And is that a state requirement for them to be bonded, or when they go through their licensing?
For the mechanical guys, is there something up there? I don't know.
Can I speak to this? So...
My name's Deborah Mitchell. I'm a licensed contractor, electrical and plumbing. The bomb, the bond serves no purpose for us. We're just throwing our money out the door. We pay all this money for our license at the state, we have to show the state that we have insurance. So that's one thing the city can alleviate, is paperwork. Because in order to hold state license, we have to have insurance, we have to send them a copy of the insurance. If our insurance, say, like mine comes due, I think in March or April, whenever it is, my wife takes care of it, she sends that form in, or my insurance lapses in August, because that's when I started my insurance. The insurance company notifies the state that I've renewed that policy, or I get a letter in the mail that I'm no longer a licensed contractor, and I have 30 days to make things right, or I have to take the test again. The bond, as I said, serves no purpose. I've been arguing this ever since the city went to the registration. Now, our license, our contractor license, is for commercial, it is not for residential. There is no residential license in the state of Ohio. I can go out here, I do not need a license to work on his house, his house, his house, or his house. There's nothing that says I have to be licensed, I can be just anybody off the street.
As a contractor, as a general contractor?
I don't even have to be a licensed contractor. I don't even have to be a licensed contractor. I can be a contractor, as long as I do not put the name on my door, I do not have to have a state license.
Right. Okay. But as a electrician, I just want to make sure this is clear. Electricians and plumbers have to have a state license?
Through the Ohio Construction Industry Licensing Board, there's six trades that have to have state licenses. And plumbers and electricians are.
Plumbers, electricians, HAVC, elevators, and them have to have state license to work on commercial property, this building. But I can go down to Mill Street and work at 119 Mill, no, can't, I wanted to get six better. I go to Palmer, I can go to Palmer, one of our rentals that I take care of. I can do electrical work in there, I can do plumbing work in there, and I do not need a license. What we need in this setting is some kind of a license for residential that all the maintenance people have to pay. I pay all this money every year because we've got two buildings. And we're trying to own its own thing. Because I take care of two commercial buildings, I have to be licensed to work in them. I pay all this money every year for this. Someone else can come in town, underbid me on a house, they don't pay.
Get between licensing, which the city I don't think can do right now, because we do not have the people power or the expertise or the business, the building department to do it. We're talking about registration.
Registration.
So, and we have talked about the fairness issue with register.
The fairness thing, I don't have a problem with registering my license with the city. I have a problem with the amount of money it costs. As a one individual, I pay this money out. Now, if I had a company where I'm making thousands and thousands of dollars, now, it'd be different. You know, what's a couple hundred dollars, or three or four hundred dollars? But when you get in a small man's pocket, myself, I know Bill back here, he's small man. Roy's small man, and R&amp;R Plumbing, they're small. And you got all this thing. But you're letting other people come in town, do the work, and not doing nothing about it. We're paying the registration, we're paying the license fees with the state, they're letting other people work in here doing our work, and we're not getting nothing out of it. I could go do the same work without a license.
But we're not talking about license?
I'm just talking about the registration, without registering. I refer to it as license because I register.
But anybody who does work in Athens would have to be registered. That is the gist of this contractor registration. So.
And as you said, everybody works in Athens. But if I work on a residential house, there is no, how do you, how do you register something? There is no such thing.
No, that would be, this process would register people who, no matter where they work. It's not a commercial versus residential. It's all, you know, contractors, whatever, the list of things, you know, refrigeration, hydronic, drywall. It's all the tradespeople would have to be registered.
So what you're saying is, I hang drywall, so I have to get another license or?
No, it would be one registration. As a contractor, worker, person, how would you define it?
You're confusing difference between license.
I have, I have, I have electrical and plumbing.
No, you would only need one permit.
Well, when I pay the city, when I, what you're saying, what I'm telling, now, what you're saying now is I only have to pay for one, I can use both of them?
Yeah.
Yes.
It would just be one registration.
You'd be registered.
It's not like last year where I paid two different fees?
No. You will be registered. Your employees for the plumbers and electricians would no longer have to come in and get their journeyman's license that the city is doing right now. Right now, it does say license in our code for plumbers and electricians. That's out. We're not going to be given licenses. We're giving registration for all contractors that are working within the city, so that we can keep track of them for tax purposes and whatever. Even on a single-family house, we're going to be requesting from the general or the owner who is going to be doing the framing, who's going to be doing the electrical, who's going to be doing the plumbing. It's not a matter of licensing, it's a matter of registration. So we know how to track them, make sure they're paying their proper taxes, and we have them registered for FEMA Emergency Response Plan as part of the letter that was proposed originally. That, that's what we're doing. It has nothing to do with what you have with your OCILB license.
Okay, I have, I have, I have another question and same for you. You're going to register everybody. Now, the people who are full-time employees, like for, I work for Hunter, okay? He pays my workman's comp and that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I don't have the workman's comp, but I keep my, my registration because I'm doing the work. You follow me?
Mm-hmm.
I work for a realtor. Now, you have another realtor over here has a maintenance man. Are they going to have to register, too?
We're, I'm trying to decide yet how we still want to do the property management companies.
I mean, it's.
Technically, yes. They should come in and be, because if they've got somebody working on staff for them that is doing the mechanical and maintenance work within that structure, then, then they should be registered.
See, that, that's where our complaint comes. We're, we're, we're paying for the registration, and we're not, you know, there, anybody, any, any college kid can come in and do that work, and it's just killing us.
But the college kid, if he's doing that type of work, should be as well.
And that's what I'm referring to, is he going to be across the board?
Absolutely.
Yes, it gets across the board.
I believe the cutoff intention is if you're working more than 12 days in the city and if you're over 18. Then if you're doing anything, it includes electricians, contractors, plumbers, fire, concrete, masonry, security systems, tree services, sprinkler systems, roofing, steel erection, fences, pools, paving, carpentry, framing, signs, siding, windows, waterproofing, excavation, solar panels.
Painting and all that.
Yep, I've got finished.
How are they going to enforce it?
We're assuming you're going to tell. Jerry, somebody who's not.
I mean, they can't even, they can't even, they can't even enforce the registration right now. How are they going to enforce this?
It's going to be mostly word of mouth. And we knew that when I spoke to the BIA, and there's a lot of members of BIA. We get calls regularly.
Well, I know you do.
And if we get a call, we'll follow up on it and try to find out and let them know. Say, we think you're working within this city and you're not registered. Come in and get your paperwork filled out.
Or else get a fine.
And there's, or else you get fined. And then it's going to happen quite a bit initially, I know. And we'll do the best we can on education process to get the word out. But, and in your guys' case, it will just be your company, not everybody that's working for your company. It would just be that one person, yourself, and any of the employees working with you or whatever, would be.
One registration.
One registration would take care of the entire company. Like, right now, I think if you have a journeyman plumber working for you, he's got to get.
Yeah, my wife has to, has to get a license because she carries my pipe.
Right. And that's not the case anymore. And that would be out. So.
So it's a streamlining of some of the, the stuff that's going on.
Well, see, 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 that's, Roy, Roy from R&amp;R was here earlier, and this is his concern, because people are coming into the city, taking his work away, he's paying all this money out, and he's not getting no, no reward for it. And we're not getting no enforcement. You know, people's coming in, doing these big jobs, these houses, jobs and stuff, and here he's paid this money out, and he calls, and nothing's done. There's no enforcement.
I think that is the thrust of it. Essentially, what you're seeing is that you have to pay workers' comp, or your employer does, there's liability insurance and there's taxes, and you're being undercut by people who aren't paying any of that.
I, I have.
That's what we're putting in place.
I have my own workman's comp because I have my own company also. But as I said, I'm full-time. And, and the problem, the problem with, with the registry was, we pulled a permit for a house. Okay? Of course, the value, you put the valuation on what you're going to do and how much it's going to cost. Well, I'm working for Scott, and I pulled a permit, then I get a letter from the city saying I owe the taxes on it, and I've already paid the taxes on it because I work here. It's very confusing, that, you know, doing it, doing it too late. But the people that are maintenance people in this town, they're doing the work. I mean, if I have to be registered, why don't they have to be registered?
They will be, hopefully. And we need people like yourself to let us know. I mean, obviously.
Now, this is, this is just a suggestion. Code enforcement comes around every year now. And they write up all these citations, electrical outlets and stuff like that. Why don't you have a sign-off list? And they have to be signed by somebody that's on that list. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Another thing I'll add, and this is for your benefit also, as part of that education, is that, yes, it, it would be like a lot of other issues with code enforcement in the city as far as complaint-based. The other part that we discussed is that the people who are registered will have some kind of card or certificate to show people. And hopefully, when somebody does want to hire somebody to work, they'll say, are you registered with the city? Before they go ahead and hire us. That would be part of the education process, so that, you know, they don't just see a name in the classifieds or, you know, let somebody walk up to their door and say, oh, sure, go ahead and trim my trees, and, without asking for that. So that's part of, the other part of the education, and a way to capture the registrations.
Right. Now, the, I think before we bring this forward, we need to address the bond issue.
Yeah, I'll look more into that.
Also, I think if it's a June 1st to June 1st, how do you capture those groups, those companies that are coming in doing, you know, the University Estates apartment complex that's going to be going on? Do you require, I mean, if you only have a window of, they have to, are you going to have a special application for visiting September 15th?
We know the first year is going to be rough for projects that are already in progress. I don't know if we can go after them or not. Once it's started, that obviously is a big one, you know.
But how do you, how, how will this process, once it gets established? If you have a June 1st, like, if everybody has to register by June 1st, how do you, I, we just need to be more.
Flexible.
Flexible. Well, there needs to be some kind of process for group, for companies that just start in September, or companies that come in.
Someone comes in September, their license would expire on June 1st.
Okay, so they would have a partial year?
And anywhere I've ever done, it's not prorated or anything. It's a partial year, and then come June 1st again the next year, they have to.
But would the bond be 1st of June?
The bond, I wanted to, yeah, the bond, I wanted to try to get from date to date. But that's, the bond would be a little bit trickier for companies like that that come in at that timeframe.
That's where the. You have questions, too? I think that having, you know, people who are on the ground really helps for this discussion.
My name's Bill Ray, and a registered contractor here in Athens, too. Electrician and plumber. I'm all for the registration. I think the fees are just a little high. Our state license don't cost as much as it does to take to register. But my main concern is, it's great that you guys are going to make a process for the maintenance and the handyman and that type of stuff, but there's no enforcement. Somebody, anybody can build a deck, and there is no recourse, you know, to the construction of it, or how it's built, or the safety of it. There's nobody enforcing this.
You're talking from the inspection process.
Yeah. And I know you don't have a board for that, but this is something that really needs done. Just because you're a maintenance man, don't make you an electrician, or a plumber, or a carpenter. There, there needs to be some kind of, you know, something that says you do have the skills. So, thank you.
And inspection, that's something that's been discussed quite a bit.
In the future.
In the future. But that's not being covered in this specific.
Yeah, no promises, so.
Okay, well, how about this? And Nancy asked about, it's, it's always good to have the actual ordinance changed, strikeouts in there and all that. I didn't go ahead and do that. I just thought we would discuss what we talked about. And Debbie, you know, got this also, so she might have already done some of this. Okay, I thought that might happen. Although, I knew she was on vacation last week anyway.
She's good.
Yeah. And so, but that's why I didn't ask her to do that, is I just thought we would discuss it, and if you say, well, no, we're not going to do that one at all, then why, you know, why go through the process? But, you know, I'm, I'm fine with us discussing this again in two weeks, a little more, you know, information on the bond. I mean, I don't know. You guys tell me if you want to start it through and then pick at it?
I think some of these administrative details need to be discussed more, and we need to find out about the bond. Lonnie, you have a question?
Just a little bit confused. I didn't think I was, but then I became confused. So plumbers and electricians need to be licensed with the city?
Right now, the way our code is written, Title 31 says that the city is supposed to be giving licenses, that we're supposed to be testing plumbers specifically to give, and give them licenses to, to work in the city. We cannot do that.
Not do that.
Not, not only can we not do it with our staff, it's probably against the revised code, but the state mandates that type of licensing process.
It's taken care of, it's Section 31.
Title 31.
That's why the strikeouts, you gave us a copy of strikeouts.
It's made the yes on Title 31. It's taken care of all of that and getting that out of there.
That helps.
So, can, so you can put some detail into these issues?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys. We can start it through, and you can amend it and pick it apart, or we can, Debbie's already got it fixed, you can start, I mean.
The mayor has.
Well, I think we want to change some of it to where we put the purposes and the whereabouts. And I think that, do people, I, I would feel comfortable bringing it to council next Monday. And have, I think right now, there's so many working copies that Debbie can put out the, this registration, the ordinance and everything. As it's all been fixed and everything, you can answer the question on the bonds. And then we can look at it Monday and discuss it as first reading. Does that seem fair? Kent?
Thank you. My, I still have concerns about the cost, especially knowing that there's other, what was the cost to get, was it bonded or the liability, it was going to cost another extra $150 or whatnot, knowing that the fee would be $100. And my, my concern would be that there are people in this community that are scraping to make ends meet and probably living below the poverty level. So $100 is a fair amount of money.
I understand what you're saying. My answer to that, though, is if you already have a bond and work in any of these other jurisdictions, which, most of the surrounding jurisdictions that are of a large size, you're required to have a bond. And if you have one through the bonding agencies, they're, they'll give you others. I'm sure there's a fee, but it's not that extensive. And liability insurance, they're going to be required to have in every one of these jurisdictions, so they're already going to have it. So that's a cost they're already paying for. It's not, unless it's somebody that's working specifically in a city, at the city of Athens city limits, and nowhere else, which I would find hard to believe, that there's any major contractor out there that's only, or even someone minor, that would work specifically in our city limits and nowhere else and be able to survive. So they should, hopefully, have that already. So we're not asking for anything that they should not already have.
Well, other than this new fee, that the cost to become.
Other than the fee to be registered.
Right, and that's my argument, is that perhaps that fee should be a little less.
So, other than the fee, then, again, we, I looked at the MAXIMUS study that was done in 2004, there wasn't really anything in there that would be comparative to what we're talking about here. So that's why I did the research with other cities.
Right.
And as you can see, Tulokaki was at 50, Circleville 75, but everybody else was 100 plus.
Right.
And then, actually, our liability, about that was lowered than everybody else as well. So maybe that's, looking at 100, 300, most other people were 300, 500.
And thank you for providing the comparison.
Yes.
You brought a great point. The thing is, there are professionals and businesses and tradesmen who do, do this type of work full-time. And then there are other people that make a little bit extra money on the side once in a while, who would legally be required to register under this. And I think that's probably what you're referring to, Kent, that someone that doesn't necessarily make a full living out of this kind of work, but they make a little bit. And they'd still be required to get the bond and the insurance and the, and the, pay the, the city's fee. And without, and I, I hear it talked to in terms of having to pay city tax, and that's not the issue. They would still be required to register even if they work less than 12 days in a year within the city, no matter how little or how much they work. And that's a problem for them.
I talked to the other cities about that, the small guy as well. And some of them have testing agencies that they contract with, where they take what's called a home improvement contractor's license. You see Columbus, they significantly lowered the cost for those type of people within the city, and the bond was not required. But the liability insurance, no matter where we went and what size they were, was required with everybody. So everywhere I searched, the liability insurance was a requirement.
And the workers' comp?
And, well, workers' comp, most of those people are self-employed, so you're not required to have workers' comp if you're self-employed anyways. So, so that's another one that, you know, a cost you don't have. But liability insurance, I didn't find anybody who was willing to waive that across the board, even for the small guy in the, in the other towns. So.
I mean, I think it's a question also, if people don't have liability insurance, I mean, as, as a homeowner, I would be very hesitant to hire. And then having a registration would say, hey, I know this person has liability insurance. And that, that's part of that fairness issue. I mean, liability insurance as a, as a worker, I mean, if you're working for your brother-in-law, then it's probably an entirely different thing. But if, you know, I think that, that in order to, to have fairness also, I mean, liability insurance is something that seems to be an across-the-board cost of doing business.
Probably the most expensive of everything on here, too, that they have to take care of on their own anyways, liability insurance. I know what a liability insurance per general contractor is, and it's, it's not cheap. It's not your $120 a month car registration. It's a lot more.
Right. Quickly.
As he said, liability insurance is not cheap. I spent a small fortune for it. But if you have everybody go with the state standard on the same amount of liability the state has, that'd be a fairness program because everybody would be competing on the same level as far as having to have a registration, and everybody would have to have the liability insurance. The only difference in fees would be if you're a master in your electrical or plumbing or HAVC elevator or fire, fire alarm systems, you'd have to pay the state, state, state fees, which is, you know, well worth it. But, because you get a little bit more work because you're allowed to do down the wall mark and work and bows and all that, if you want to do that. But the fairness is to have everybody have the same amount of insurance requirement.
And that's, that, definitely, we are not talking about different insurance levels.
Okay. And I, I, I know it's a little bit off the subject, but the maintenance people, I think that every company or every landlord that rents premises should have to have that liability insurance and have to have a qualified person. There should be some qualifications on registering people. Someone will come in and say they're a siding person and they've never seen a piece of siding in their life. So there has to be some kind of a, a board set up. We used to have a good plumbing board.
A general test or something.
A general test. I know the state said you're not allowed to test. It's very complicated.
Right.
I've been fighting this ever since the, the laws come in. And I contacted Mr. Sands about four or five years ago about the bond, they never got an answer. And I've contacted some of the other people, never got an answer because it's just been slowed off. But the way the bonding company explained to me is when I take my bond down to the city of Athens, that bond can only be used if I perform an act of work for the city of Athens. Now, back when Mr. Howell was code officer here, Howell told me, he says, no, Ed, he said, that bond, and this is why I've been upset about it, that bond is if you go to someone's house and you do a job and you don't complete it for any reason at all, they come to us, we take that bond and we cash it in, and we finish their house.
Right. Well, and that's, that's why Mr. Paskey is going to look at the bonds.
Well, that's why, that's why, you know, just give me that. Now, my liability insurance covers anything that I do personal damage. If I go out here and damage a road, my liability insurance covers it. If I burn this podium down doing soldering, it, it covers. You understand what I'm saying? It's the liability insurance that has to stay, not the bond.
Okay. So that, I think is an excellent, but as a registration where the city is registering, the city would not be responsible for people finishing. And that would be a personal thing where people would have to.
All right. And you see on the comparison list where it says state required on liability in Columbus for mechanicals? That's because the city of Columbus has taken the approach of what he was just saying. In order for them to have their state license, the state of Ohio is requiring them to prevent or provide proof of liability insurance at that time. So the city is just saying, well, we know that the state has approved them, we're not going to worry about collecting this certificate because we know he's been approved by the state. As long as he can prove us a valid certificate of licensure for the state of Ohio, then we're okay with not collecting a written proof of liability. So that's where he was getting at on that aspect. And I don't know what the state, what is it, a million two or are you 3.5?
3.5, I think.
3.5. So, which is the same as they required for generals anyways.
Right. Okay. So, Lohu?
Sorry to keep this going. So, say someone mows a handful of five lawns throughout the summer. How much would it cost them to get the insurance and be registered? And we might do it with bonds, but all in all, what would it cost them to be able to do those five lawns for a summer?
It's under 12 days, right?
Right.
But you'd still be required, according to the language, you'd still be required to be registered. You just wouldn't have to pay city income tax on that income.
No, the, there's exemptions to this.
I haven't seen that.
That is the same as the exemptions to the city income tax.
So the 12-day.
Right. So.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry that I.
12 days. I think it is in there.
But what we've got to be careful on, on that 12 days.
It's been a long night, sir.
We need to throw, yeah, we need to throw in, you know, a dollar amount, which is $600, I believe, when they cash it.
Yeah.
But let's face it, you can get a drywaller to do a job that he's there for 11 days, but his contract is $2 million. I mean, you know, so.
Not my house.
I'm not, but, you know, what I'm trying to say. So it's, it's a series of things. The age, the number of days, the dollar amount, you know. If you're under all three, if you're under 18, if you're under 12 days, you're under $600 bucks, then you're not required to.
Well, thank you. I somehow missed that.
So can you address these questions and then get back to us with?
Debbie, you'll be hearing from us.
And then we'll have the ordinance with all the strikeouts.
Put it together. And just one other thing I wanted to add about the registration fee. I don't feel strongly about that or reducing it one way or another. But, you know, I just want people to keep in mind that that is sort of a cost of doing business, that when you're, if you have a business, that's going to be a deduction, as Chris mentioned earlier, that, you know, that just doesn't necessarily all come out of your pocket, that, you know, you can use that on your taxes to reduce, you know, amount of money you pay and things like that.
If you think about it, if you're doing 12 days at $10 an hour at eight hours a day, you're running about $900, $860 or something like that, $960. And I, I'm sure most people are getting paid a little bit more than $10 an hour to do this type of stuff. And they're probably more, working more than 10 hours, eight hours a day, or they're working more than 12 days. Like, somebody's cutting lawn, I've cut lawns, it's once a week, and that's all summer lawn. So that's more than 12 days just cutting lawns. Okay? So, and I know it was in, in 1974, I was getting paid $8 an hour for that. Okay? And that was good money, but that's in $1974, you know?
You did a really good job.
What?
You did a really good job, too. So, can, so we will.
Well, get these changes in there and get it out to everybody as soon as we can and, you know, it can be picked apart next meeting. Fine with me, whatever anybody wants.
Getting closer.
Right. I'm just glad that, that we're moving it along. And it's a start. We don't have a building department. We really cannot license anybody. But, you know, it's a start for us to capture some other things the city needs. One other thing, oh, no, you're still on planning and development, nevermind.
And I want to say thank you to people who came tonight. I think that your insight is invaluable to this process. Thank you.
That's just how it works.
Yep. And I don't have any miscellaneous, so I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Finance and personnel, I think it's pretty quick. I talked to the mayor this afternoon. He mentioned that we have a housing revolving loan fund that is managed for us by Hockey Athens Ferry Treaty Action Program. And that, that agreement actually ran out December 31st, so we need to reinstitute that quickly.
Yes.
And it's actually a two-part deal. First, we have to, well, at the same time, we have to approve the housing revolving loan fund administration agreement, and then an administrative services contract which allows that agreement to, which, which allows HAPCAP to, to deal with this for us. So that'll be forward on, on Monday, and we may well ask for suspensions since we're out of contract. Mayor, was there one, there was something else you said?
Yes, a couple of things that you don't have to act on now, but next meeting, regular meeting, I need appointments for the city healthy, health, city-county health board. Essentially, I think you probably got some of the literature. I don't know if you got past everybody or anybody. This is for a Robert Woodworth of Longview Heights. He's, he's going to be appointed, and a renewal appointment of Marge Nelson, who is on the board right now. These, in one case, it's to replace a Marty Frye who has resigned from the board, in case of Mr. Woodworth. On the other case, it's a renewal since her term has lapsed. They, I know Chuck Hammer and Dr. Gaskell have been trying to get a full quorum in place. And I have two other items. You say you have an item?
I have one, yeah.
Okay. Two items. And it's kind of, basically, I'd like to put some money into the Athens Enhancement Fund. One is because, you remember the beautification, Student Senate came in front of us for beautification day? They've not approached us for the money, but I imagine as time gets close, they will. In the past, we've put $1,000 towards their activities. If they don't approach us, and they may, as I said, I'm going to be talking to the Student Senate sometime Wednesday, and I'll mention it to them. So they might realize that they need to do something about that. The other one is, I was just, talked to Representative Columbia Gas. What they're going to do is in the city, starting April 12th, is they're going to be replacing the gas risers. A grass riser is a pipe that comes out of the ground, goes into your meter. They have, according to their data, they have to, they're going to replace 1,900 of them within the city, or rather, within the 45701 area code. They, we're going to do some publication of this, it'll be on the web. They have sent letters to somebody, they sent some letters in 2008, so everybody who got one knows it's happening. But they're also sending other letters, and they will actually put a tag on your door. One of the conditions of this, of course, is they have to turn off the gas. Before they turn off the gas, they are going to actually check all the appliances and lines inside the house. So they have to wait. They will be working until 9 o'clock to do this, the representative tells us. The concept there, though, is that there's little loose pipes, because really, as I know from my own experience, you tighten a pipe one place, it gets loose another place. They can do some of the tightening. In some cases, where ovens or other things do not perform in terms of venting, they will already tag that. My concern of this, and I, I had a meeting with Chief Troxel, John Paskey, and Assistant Service Director Ron Lucas, one of the concerns is if somebody actually has low income, does not have the ability to get appliance or something fixed, in particular like piping or something like that. In other words, Columbia Gas goes in, they can't fix the problem, but somebody doesn't have the money to it. I'd like to actually kind of merge that paint program we have to address some of these problems, if they occur. I don't know if they will, but 1,900 houses, there's, most of them probably rentals, some of them may not be, most of them probably have the wherewithal to cover this. But the fact is, the paint program, home improvement program has in the past done some repairs of some sort. We only have $5,000 appropriate for that. We didn't use any of it last year, of course. We didn't really push it. But I just would like to, so these are two different items coming out of the Athens Enhancement. About, we have $15,000 normally in that account for the paint program and $1,000 for beautification. So I'd like to see if we could put that in there, just in case. They'll, as they, they expect to be done, I think, sometime in July, but as I say, they're starting on 12th, so it'll be busy.
Starting when?
April 12th and ending July 1st. They hope to complete it, and they have 1,900 customers. So that is the reason why I'm addressing it as a finance personnel item, because if they need to have some, we need to have some kind of process in place or money's in place for both, just in case. Okay? That's all I have.
Okay.
Just on the gas, real quick.
Yes.
That will, of course, involve digging up a lot of yards and sidewalks and.
Yes, it will. We're going to get a lot of feedback. That's why we're going to do publicity. We hope to get it on the next billing cycle, so it'll be on your, on your bills. We'll be on a website with a link to the Columbia Gas. There's a gentleman by the name of Tim Newber, I think it is, and, Tim Newber, and that will be also a link to his group. The company that's doing it, I think, is called Northern Pipeline is their contractor for doing this. I know Chief Troxel wanted direct numbers to all the parties involved. His concern, of course, is if they have a truck that's in front of a house that catches